You're number one today.
No, it's finance.
Okay, it's at 5:32 PM, I call the Finance Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuzina?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Schumaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
The President.
I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move it. Support.
Okay, is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the committee. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment to the committee this evening? Is there anybody? Third time, final time. Seeing none, we move forward. Communications, I don't think we have any communications, do we, Mr. Freeman?
No, sir.
No old business, new business. Resolution 25-2435 forwarding to receive and file a copy of the county bills for the week's ending. 9/1/25, 9/28/25, 10/5/25, and a total amount of $16,404,579.48. Can I get that 48 cents in, Dale?
I'm sorry, Mike.
You are.
I didn't want to shortchange you.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution 25-2476, approval of a purchase order to CMP Distributors Incorporated in the... Huh?
Do that, we'll do the next one.
Okay, alright, gosh darn it. Approval of purchase order to CMP distributors... Distributors. What do we, what do you want to do?
Number two.
No, they want to do, continue with number three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You guys are getting me in an argument here.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote? Which one do we want to do?
No.
Okay, let's do number three, I'm sorry. 25-2476, approval of purchase order to CMP Distributors Incorporated in the amount of $17,675 for the purchase of quarterly sixty-four, quantity sixty-four external vest carriers at Genesee County's Office of the Sheriff. The cost of this purchase order is grant funded. Bart? Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution 25-2471, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the 2526 Appropriations Resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution 25-2551, approval to create, post, and fill a tax foreclosure outreach specialist position in the Treasurer's Office contingent on receiving a grant from Rocket Community Fund.
Move it. Support.
Is there any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm not on the committee, but can I ask for the Treasurer to come up and answer a couple of questions?
Mr. Yuma?
Can you just talk a little bit about this position and the intent and the model?
I'm gonna let the Chief Deputy Treasurer do that. I have been instrumental in the discussions and part of it, but she can do the proper verbiage better than I can.
Okay.
We actually found out about this grant through an email that went to the land bank, and they passed it on to us because what they were trying to do really aligns with more what we do in the Treasurer's Office. And the purpose of this grant is to promote what they're, what most people are calling now the hope exemption. It's the homeowner's property exemption, or I refer to it as the poverty exemption. So there's a section of the law that allows, or I think it requires actually, local units to adopt a poverty exemption policy within each local unit. And the poverty exemption gives a break on taxes to people who meet at least the federal poverty guidelines. And this position would be to promote, to go out and promote the hope exemption within the community. In our tax foreclosure program, I just, we, one of the things we ask people to do is prove to us what their income is when they're coming in to ask for additional time to avoid foreclosure. And through just looking at the income guide, or the income that we see coming in, I believe with just looking at everything, that at least 50% of our taxpayers that we are helping through our tax foreclosure program are living at the base level Social Security amount, which is less than $1,000 a month. The poverty exemption, federal guidelines, I think is around $26,000 per year right now. So at least 50% of the people who we are granting foreclosure prevention, or additional time to avoid foreclosure, I think at least 50% of them would qualify if they could get the poverty exemption, which would lower their taxes in the future. It won't change any of the delinquent taxes, but it could lower future taxes, which can help them get caught up. This position would work hand in hand with taxpayers to complete the application and submit it to the local unit, and the end goal would be that they would, they would be successful applications, which would get additional people receiving the poverty exemption, so that going forward, maybe they can afford their tax bills and that. So the push really for this is for the person to be out in the public, working with taxpayers. We do not have the manpower with our current staff to assist people. We see, on average, about 1,000 people a year between January and March. And one of the statistics that I had to do for this application was to look and see when we see those people. And we did, I think, 800, about 800, a little over 800, what I refer to as postponements this year. 400 of them were seen in the month of March. So especially in the time, the month of March, our staff doesn't have time to assist people to fill out applications when they're, to get the applications into the local units to assist. So that's the main purpose of this grant funded position, is to assess taxpayers to submit the application and complete it, so.
And can, just a follow-up question, if I may. So this is, if we get the grant, it's a one-year grant from the Rocket Community Fund?
That's correct.
Is the intent to apply for it as a renewable grant?
If it is renewable, yes, we do intend to continue to apply for the grant as we can. This grant actually is gonna run from November 1st. We, I just, on, late on Friday, I got a copy of the draft agreement. And the agreement is from November 1st through December 31st of 2026. So it is gonna pass over just a little year thing, so the delinquent tax will pay any costs that are associated with this position that is not covered by the grant.
Thank you.
And they have, it also has been something they've done successfully down towards Detroit. That's kinda where we got the idea from. And given the number of people, for my first year being here, and I just thought it would be good that we could educate throughout the year, not just January through March, and put the personal touch on it, because we have a lot of individuals that are seniors throughout the county. And sometimes it, they just don't comprehend or understand the full extent of filling out the application. And we truly believe that it'll be a beneficial program. And if it is, they'll probably be more than willing to fund it, you know, again. And then from there, we can decide in the future, if you're, you know, good enough to allow us to do it. It could end up being something permanent down the line, but we didn't want to start with that, we wanted to build to that.
Yeah, how much would, I'm sorry, Dr. Brown.
I'm done.
Okay, how much is the grant for, do you know?
$100,000.
Okay. Anybody else?
Your Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, excellent, 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 excellent. I'm sure, as others in the room, myself for sure, I've been called upon at times to assist individuals in a myriad of ways, including financially, family members, right? Who may not even known that they could fill out something for some assistance, or whatever the case may be. And I think this really hits at, you know, our responsibility to serve the residents of Genesee County. So I think this is a very, very important role, and will save, help people in a major way. My question is, you said the delinquent tax foreclosure fund, is there enough money in there, if you don't get this grant again, to continue to fund this position? Because it sounds like something that is absolute necessity. Because we don't need to just, you know, it's not intention to take properties, but to help individuals stay in it, and sound like that's what this stuff is.
We were prepared after we seen, going through it a season, if we can renew the grant and we go through a season or two, it would be something we would come back, and, and we do have the money to be able to cover it in the future. But we didn't want to start there, we wanted to take advantage of what was a grant we thought was a good opportunity to help the constituents that come to our office. Or we find out in the field when we're educating the public.
I'd also like to add that he is correct. This program has been going on, and they have supported, Rocket Community Fund has supported this program in Wayne County, so they're looking to expand it in as many counties as they can across the state, because they're, that's what their push is.
So...
One of the good things about this grant is they also are providing assistance to try to get out into the community. We've had several meetings with the program manager, and I believe they're trying to work even with legal services to try to get them to help individuals in different ways as well. This is something I think we can work hand in hand with our Home for Generations program that we have, that where we're trying to get individuals through prorate to get property into their name, they're living in a grandparents' house or something. If the person who's identified as living in the grandparents' house is somebody who qualifies for the, this exemption, then once we, they work through that Home for Generations program, we would be able to work them through this program as well. I also talked to Pam, the Director of GC Card, saying that, working with her department as well, that that's another avenue for us to identify people outside of our tax delinquent collection. Like, that's another way for us to identify people who might also qualify for this program.
And then one follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Is it intention that this position will engage and interact with any of the 33 units of government within the county, or is it just assistance? Is there a necessity for them to do that, or is it just assistance filling out the applications and getting them in?
So part of the requirements of the grant is for us to promote it. So we will have to work directly with the local units of government. We probably will, this position will probably hold clinics at different places, trying to get taxpayers to come in. But yes, it will be involved, because every local unit has a different policy. They can, like, it's not a one policy for the, across the state. Every local unit has their own individual policies and requirements, so we will have to work with the local units to know what their policy is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Yeah, just one final comment. I know that throughout the years, your department, excuse me for a second, Sam, but, you know, Carla, you know, with your predecessor, that you guys have done a lot to help people stay in their homes. And I know, Sam, since you've been here, you've been trying real hard to take that to even to a higher level. And I appreciate the effort that the Treasury Department is doing to help people stay in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We don't, that's the end of the agenda. I just wanted to give a little update at where we're at with the wages that we need to take care of for the directors and co-lectives and non-union people. Our fellow Commissioners Lloyd, Schumaker, Wayhill, who else, Getzinger? I don't know, was you on that following? I can't remember, but any rate, they've been working real hard at putting that together and so that we can move forward with that. They weren't quite ready, we weren't quite ready for, to putting it, right, putting it on tonight's agenda. There's a couple little details that finance is working as to how much it's gonna cost the board, but they'll have that by, well, Friday, but they'll probably have it before that. And then Crystal, through her department, she's going to send out an email to everybody to explain where that committee has come out to and what they're gonna do. This will, should include everybody except for Josh, Corporate Counsel, and what is it, Anita, correct? And, but any rate, once you get that on Friday or sooner, feel free to call Crystal to get any answers, or any of the other Commissioners that sat on that board to do that. But they've done a lot of work to bring that forward, and hopefully we'll bring it. I'm gonna pass it through committee tonight, and it'll be on the full board to consider next Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, I get to close too, I adjourn.
Alright, Governmental Operations Committee is called to order at 5:48 PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Schumaker?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Flewelling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We have a quorum. The minutes from October 8th, 2025 are before us. What's your pleasure?
Moved.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. Do we have any public comment to Governmental Operations? Public comment going twice, public comment going three times. Public comment to Governmental Operations is closed. Under Communications, we have the first item, 25-708, opioid presentation. Marlene, would you come forward, identify yourself, and kick us off?
Thank you, Committee Chair. Marlene Callic, Community Engagement and Justice Services. Today, I will be presenting, not with Dr. Nager, as a matter of fact, I am introducing Dr. Nager from Michigan State University. And you guys may recall, we were challenged, and when I say "we," the Opioid Settlement Advisory Committee was challenged to get out to our community members and ask them about their wants, really, and what they feel their needs are regarding the opioid settlement funds. And that's what we did with Michigan State University. I have to say, it was pretty divine, the way it happened, and I remember it very specifically, because it was voted in our committee setting. And it was almost to the point of us having to go find a member, like they did with the Millage, and paid somebody and get an RFP posted. And then, again, our colleagues with Michigan Association of Counties, Amy, told us about technical assistance, and that the state of Michigan had these technical assistance centers throughout our state to specifically do that. And so we were graced to not spend any type of opioid settlement funds and the research team with Michigan State University. So I am proud to honestly bring Dr. Nager here and have her share these results that we talked with people about.
Thank you, thanks, Marlene, thanks.
Thanks, everybody. It's good to be here with you. I'm gonna try to go through this quickly. It's so much information. We talked to probably about 80 people. We did qualitative interviews with about 80 individuals. Most of those were people with lived and living experiences. When I say people with lived experiences, I mean those who have used substances in the past and are currently not using substances in recovery. Those with living experiences are people who are still using substances. Many of those are people who are not in any form of treatment, those individuals we talked to who are still... Did I lose, I'm very short, so I tried to adjust the mic there, sorry. So, we talked to a lot of people. We talked to people who are currently in the jail. We talked to people in housing facilities and housing shelters. We talked to people who are utilizing harm reduction facilities, as well as people who are, again, seeking out services, receiving services either in residential services, outpatient services, or people who are in recovery housing. So we have tons of info. So I've tried to condense it, and what I'm really gonna focus on are the recommendations. So I'll show you the very first thing that we have here. Down? Oh, I'm sorry. I had this down earlier, and then apparently, I'm just hitting the wrong button. There we go. Apologize for that. And you have the PowerPoint in front of you as well. That is yours to use if you want to refer to any of these slides. This map here, we call this our, essentially our map of findings, how the concepts are all related to each other. What I really want to point to, I'm not gonna go over the whole thing, but I really wanted to note that the findings that we have, we really can group into two big categories. On the top, the green, are the themes that really are those things that support health. They're facilitators, they facilitate people to either engage in services or to move toward health. And so those include assets, those are things that are currently present in the community that help people. So having a strong community, having quality services. And in Flint, there is a very strong harm reduction center. It's limited in terms of the capacity of people that they can reach, but it's very well trusted, and they provide really great support and services and linkages to substance use disorder providers in the community. And then we also have the community supports. So what are the supports that are present in the community that really help people to be ready to seek support? So peer support services are really important, those can be both formal and informal. Aftercare and recovery services are critical. And having healthy communities, those type of community events and activities that really are supportive of wellness, and in particular, are recovery oriented. And then at the bottom, in the maroon color, we have the challenges. And those include both gaps and barriers. There were three big gaps that we identified, timely access, so there are a lot of service providers who provide, again, really good quality services. The problem is, is that the need still outweighs the capacity of those service providers, and so people often end up having to wait, length, have a lengthy wait before they can get into treatment. And when that happens, even a three-day wait can mean a person is going to overdose. And so having, really reducing that wait time is really important. Because so many people have experienced such deep and ongoing trauma, having more trauma-informed care and supporting providers to really be responsive to the trauma that individuals with substance use disorder bring to the space with them is really important. And then having more opportunities for outreach. And we'll go over the recommendations related to these throughout the presentation, but I just kind of wanted to point out, those were the big gaps. Genesee County has a lot of really good, high-quality services. These are the gaps that really can help to make that system better functioning and be more responsive to individuals' needs. And then also addressing experience needs, so the needs of individuals, residents who live in the county who are seeking services. Often, if people have unstable housing, if they're not able to meet their basic needs, it's really hard for them to be ready to seek support or treatment. So addressing those experience needs are really important. And then addressing other barriers, addressing stigma, addressing being more responsiveness to people's needs. Lack, encouraging more awareness of supports and services, and awareness of substance use disorder will help to address issues related to mistrust of the support systems that are present, and also help us to reduce the barriers that our providers are experiencing when they're trying to support, when they're providing services to individuals. Okay, so now we'll get into the recommendations. Any questions before I move into the recommendations? Okay, alright. So for the recommendations, we have these big categories of recommendations. So recommendations around supporting community facilitators, addressing the gaps that we just identified, addressing those experience needs that prevent well-being and recovery. We talked about those too, all these we just talked about. Addressing stigma and lack of awareness of substance use disorder and services. Increasing the system's responsiveness to individual needs, and that means not just a provider, but all of the providers and how they work together. And then addressing the barriers that providers experience when they're supporting these indivi... Okay, so... There we go. Okay, so we're gonna talk first about the recommendations around supporting community facilitators. There are two broad categories of these, as I already said, building community supports and building upon existing assets. We saw that from that concept map. And this is the recommendation for strengthening those community supports. We're really focused on recovery services, healthy community activities, and peer services. The recommendation itself is supporting the expansion of Genesee County Recovery Community Activities and Services that are offered. and services that are offered in the county. And these are just some example identified actions. We have a lot of identified actions. We're only showing you a few selected ones so that you can get a sense of what they look like. We're also choosing to share some of the ones that may be a little more challenging, where there's more work to go, because it seemed like that would be more important for you all to review. Okay, so the two identified actions here are create and expand recovery services that support the transition back into the community when people are exiting either a residential treatment facility or they're exiting recovery housing services. That's often a really critical time for people that results in kind of a dangerous space if they're not, if they don't have the supports that they need. And then, promoting the expansion of recovery-safe spaces throughout the county. Okay. The next one is... Addressing the gaps. So, we'll look at what these gaps are. We have some categories of recommendations within these gaps. Increasing, again, we already went through these three, increasing timely access to care, promoting trauma-informed care, and expanding outreach and engagement. So, some of these have multiple recommendations. We're trying to, again, limit that, so we're just showing one usually of each. And so, for increasing timely access to care, we have... Sorry, I went too fast. There we go. So, increasing timely access to care, we have expanding clinic hours, expanding flexible programming, and building upon the already-developed infrastructure for rapid response. So, there's already a pretty good, strong rapid response team here in the county, building upon that. Some of the identified actions that we're showing here are funding extended hours at clinics that include evenings and weekends. We heard from a lot of people, you know, "These are the hours that are available, but I need to be at work during that time, so I lost my job because I had to come here." So, providing those kinds of extended hours are important. Piloting virtual group programming for individuals to balance work and recovery. There are some of those that are already happening in the county, so where there are successful ones, building upon those models. Exploring hiring additional intake staff or peer navigators who can be really helpful, that can speed up enrollment and triage, and also take some of the burden off of the individuals who are in crisis at that point. And supporting short-term bridge programs for individuals who are waiting for longer-term placement so that you're not leaving people with a big gap if there are no services, if the residential facility doesn't have a spot for them, or if they're needing to go into recovery housing, and there's not a spot in recovery housing at that time. Next, we'll look at trauma, promoting trauma-informed care. And here, we're looking at expanding trauma-informed programming. There's already some here, but how do we expand upon that? Ensuring all providers attend training for trauma-informed approaches. Establishing or expanding additional trauma-specific recovery and treatment groups and ensuring gender-based and youth-safe spaces. We heard from a number of people about how, as they're coming to particularly the group treatment that's really, people report as being really helpful for them, having a group space that's designated where people really know how to address trauma in that space is really important. We had people experiencing gender-based trauma, and so, being in a group, say, if it's a woman who's been raped, and she is wanting to share how that experience has contributed to her substance use disorder, sometimes sharing that in a mixed-gender space cannot feel safe, right? So, having those safe spaces, both for men and for women, and then also having youth-safe spaces, again, that's really focused on a space where people can share their trauma and have responsiveness in a way that's appropriate, given the type of trauma that they've experienced. And then, also improving trauma responsiveness in correctional settings through both training and potentially through environmental redesign. All right, so now, we're going to talk about expanding outreach and engagement. And here, we're going to focus on the recommendation of supporting culturally-responsive outreach and education for both adults and for youth. Some of the example identified actions include funding black-led, community-based outreach teams focused on SUD education and engagement for youth and adults, partnering with trusted messengers, so people who are already in the community, who are trusted. Maybe they're peer recovery coaches who can work out in the community to help reduce stigma and increase awareness. And then, creating multilingual and culturally-relevant harm reduction and recovery campaign materials. So, that's wrapping back into that harm reduction. And then, expanding culturally-competent outreach efforts in black and underserved communities. Really not good with this clicker right now. Okay. All right, so now, we're going to look at a second. I said that there were a couple of instances where we actually will look at two recommendations. So, for expanding outreach and engagement, another recommendation is supporting mobile and street-based engagement. There are three identified actions we'll talk about. Funding peer recovery coaches or community health workers who can conduct neighborhood-level canvassing, so street outreach. We talked to a lot of people who, or maybe not a lot, but a number of people who are currently unhoused or were unhoused at the time that we talked to them, and they're very disconnected from many of the services that are available. And so, making sure that there are people who can increase that awareness and access to services is really important. Supporting pop-up engagement events in high-needs areas, like park outreach, food pantry drop-ins are just some examples. Providing more engagement services in the community that include things like transportation, group activities, and education sessions. Okay. And I'm going the wrong way. Sorry. All right, now, we're going to look at addressing experience needs that prevent well-being and recovery. So, again, that's taking those basic needs and making sure that, how can we support those who are experiencing substance use disorder to be able to meet those needs so that they can start to think about how they move toward recovery? So, maybe that's seeking services or treatment. All right, so there are four here that we're going to look at, and we have one recommendation for each with some action items, supporting access to basic needs and transportation, supporting access to housing, supporting access to behavior health services, and supporting access to employment and financial resources. And so, here, we have increasing access to basic needs and transportation. So, the action item here, or recommendation, is developing strategies to increase access to basic needs across the county. So, that includes things like expanding resources that provide food, clothing, employment, ID recovery for residents with substance use disorder. We've talked to so many people who have lost their ID and now need their ID so that they can seek services, so they can get into the services that they need. Really common. And then, expanding transportation voucher and ride coordination programs for residents. There were a lot of people who talked about they, there were rideshare programs that they could get a ride to. Once they give them the address and it's a substance use disorder facility, then they're told that the rideshare program won't go there. And so, expanding those kinds of transportation opportunities for people so they can get to their treatment is important. And then, increasing flexible funding to address emergent individual needs during early recovery. If you're in early recovery and something happens, you have no food to feed your family, that can easily spiral for an individual. And so, having a place where they can go to meet those emergent individual needs early on can help them move, continue toward recovery. Okay. Now, increase access to housing. This is a huge issue. It's an issue all across the state. It's a tremendous, I can't emphasize enough how big of an issue this is. I know you all are aware of that. For those experiencing substance use disorder, having, not having stable housing is probably one of the number-one things that we hear from individuals is preventing them from being able to move toward treatment and recovery. And there's research that documents that instability, when people experience instability in housing, that can actually trigger substance use disorder. And it's not just that substance use disorder leads to homelessness. It's that also, yes, people who are experiencing housing instability get really frustrated. They don't know where to go. They don't know where to turn. And they start, sometimes people will then use drugs as a way to treat the issue, the problem that they are having, the enormity of that problem. Okay, so... All right, so the recommendation is developing strategies to increase safe, affordable, and supportive housing for residents with substance use disorder. Some of the example identified actions include exploring, expanding access to low-barrier shelters for individuals in recovery throughout the county that also provide connections to SUD services within the facility. Increasing recovery housing options for families and individuals with children. We talked to a lot of people who said, "I can't go into residential, I cannot go into either residential treatment or recovery housing because there's no one to take care of my kids." And so, addressing those issues for families is really important. Their, Genesee County is unique in that you have probably one of the better family-oriented recovery housing programs here, which is amazing, but it's really limited in capacity. But again, we've heard that all across the state. That is not unique to Genesee County and its need. Prioritizing access to recovery housing for justice-involved individuals and those exiting treatment. That's one of the biggest danger times for people. Overdose rates and death due to overdose is that you're at your highest risk when you leave jail or when you leave residential treatment facility, because it's really easy to relapse if you don't have those recovery supports really securely in place. And most of the time, people are leaving without those supports in place. And then, because they have not been using for a period of time, their tolerance is lower. They use the same amount that they used before they went to jail, before they went to treatment, and they're much more likely to die. And then, also, expanding long-term housing opportunities focused on recovery-safe spaces that connects individuals to those supportive services. So, it's really about making sure there are connections throughout the system. And then, increasing access to behavior health. So, behavior health is also one of the, along with housing, number one, probably those are the top two things that we hear from people, housing and behavior health. So, exploring options to integrate mental and behavioral health and substance use treatment. And the identified action that we're sharing here is developing strategies. There are more, but this was the one we wanted to highlight. Developing strategies to strengthen the capacity of substance use service providers in the county to both assess and diagnose, and then to move toward treatment for co-occurring SUD and psychiatric disorders. This is a huge issue. It's really hard for providers to deal with. It's very nuanced, understanding what the needs are of an individual who has a diagnosed opioid use disorder, what kinds of treatments, what kind of medications are best for them when they're also experiencing very severe psychiatric problems. It's very tricky and requires really specialized care. Okay, now, on to accessing employment supports. And so, again, we have multiple, but we're just going to highlight one here. Developing recovery-friendly workplace practices and workplace placement programs that can be implemented throughout the county. And this is more of a kind of a systems approach, right? What are the kinds of supports? How can we pull businesses in, have them come to the table and help us to identify or help you all to identify the kinds of workplace practices and programs that can be developed to really support people who are in recovery to be able to be employed as well. All right, now, we're going to address stigma and lack of awareness. We're going to talk about promoting community education about substance use disorder and then also training those helping professionals. The helping professionals are everybody that is in a helping role. Police officers. We're talking about healthcare providers, particularly in emergency rooms, in emergency departments. Also, substance use disorder professionals as well. All right, so, and addressing stigma. There's stigmas everywhere. So, the recommendation is developing strategies and trainings to educate the general community and staff about substance use disorder and normalize recovery. And this is actually separated out into two different recommendations. We've combined it here to make this a little shorter for you all. The example identified actions include developing multimedia campaigns to highlight recovery stories. And those recovery stories really need to reflect diverse recovery paths. That means if a person is on medication to treat opioid use disorder, helping people to understand that that's a legitimate path, that's a legitimate recovery path. That's not, that's a misconception that many people have. So, addressing that directly, highlighting the importance of harm reduction as a way to both keep people alive and build connections to individuals so that when they're ready for treatment, they can get it, they have a trusted place where they can go. Affirming the use of non-judgmental, person-first language. The language we use matters. And if people are feeling that they are being judged, that they're looked down upon, that they're not worth it, then they're not going to seek supports. And so, changing that kind of language. And framing relapse as a time for compassion and re-engagement. We hear from providers, again, throughout the state, they'll say, "Well, you know, it's just a revolving door. They just keep coming in. They're just, you know, it's not worth it." It is worth it. If you save a person's life, maybe they're not ready now, but if they keep trying and they don't die, then you continue to have a chance to help them to move toward recovery. And so, really, that's really important, because it also helps people to feel like, "Okay, I relapsed. Now, I can, I'm, I need to go back," right? And not feel that there's that stigma associated with that relapse. Okay. All right, increasing system responsiveness to individual needs. Here, we have a recommendation to support the cross-organization collaboration to build the capacity to flexibly meet the needs of all residents with substance use disorder. This is hard. This is tricky work, because there are a lot of providers. There are a lot of different systems interacting together, and how do you get them all to work together? It's not easy to do, but it's super important. And so, some of the identified actions are, we tried to reduce some of these, but we still have a lot of them for this one. Building the capacity for existing providers to ensure that services are offered at... Let's see. Sorry, I was reading, like, I think that that one, we cut and pasted, and that one ended up in there a second time. You think, Marlene? I don't know either. Okay. Oh, no, it's not. I'm sorry. I had a, like, yeah, it's right, it's right. Had a fourteen-hour day yesterday, so... Okay, building the capacity for existing providers to ensure that services are offered at accessible times and in accessible locations. We had people driving, you know, sometimes thirty minutes to get to wherever their treatment facility was. And they're like, "Well, I can only do this because my husband is employed and I don't have to work. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to do this." So, addressing those kinds of system responsiveness to needs. Supporting existing providers to ensure that services are evidence-based and reflect the diversity of residents in Genesee County. So, when I say "evidence-based," one of the things that often comes up when we talk about evidence-based treatment, I referred to this a little bit when I was talking about, particularly around people who are on medications to treat opioid use disorder. There are perceptions that are held by providers, residents, people with substance use disorder, that if you are on a treatment, a medication to treat opioid use disorder, that you are not in recovery, that that is just... that you are not in recovery. That that is just a replacement for street drugs. And according to the research, that's actually the one, only form of treatment that leads to the risk of death, that reduces the risk of death. So, medication to treat opioid use disorder is critical and really important. And there are some really good practices that have been developed, and we have good research to support kind of long-term use for those. So, ensuring that providers have access to that information is, um, and that's evidence-based is really important. Exploring funding models that provide extended-length services, especially for residential services and recovery housing. Talked to a lot of people who have to leave their recovery housing at, say, three months or six months. They have nowhere to go at that point. They're just getting really stable in their recovery. And, uh, and if they have to leave that and they're not quite ready, that can pose a real risk for them. So, making sure that there are opportunities for extended-length services. Providing organization and staff training to increase culturally responsive care. Um, again, that's more kind of staffing and supportive, uh, for culturally responsive care. And then strengthening the capacity of organizations to provide continuity of care across both systems and organizations. So, this is really, again, that systems coordination work. And then, we will look at addressing provider barriers. Now, for provider barriers, what we're gonna look at here is the recommendation to build the capacity of organizations to support provider well-being. People who are providing support, whether they're peer recovery coaches, or, um, a psychologist, or any other kind of provider, uh, experiences a lot in their day-to-day activity, right? And so, making sure that we're taking care of those individuals. Examining, um, and, and we can do that by looking at funding models that support appropriate provider pay rates that can reduce employee, employee turnover is really important. And that is one of the, especially for peer recovery coaches, who are usually one of the number one, the first person that a person who's kind of early in recovery, or maybe not even quite there yet, will feel comfortable turning to. Their pay rates are so low that they're using, um, pan- food pantry services, right? They can't afford food themselves, um, because the pay rates are so low. So, making sure that that is, I don't know what happened, but it disappeared, but I think that's fine. Is it just? So, that was a lot, but, and I'm pretty sure that was the end, so, what questions do you all have?
Thank you, Dr. Nager. And do we have questions or comments from the committee members or others on the commission? Commissioner Winfrey?
Uh, yeah. Is there a single point of entry for a person seeking services rather than to go service shopping? Like, uh, I know back in the day, there was an intake assessment and referral center. Do we have anything like that today?
Not currently. And that's one of the recommendations was to, um, explore, one, what happened to that single point of entry? And then to work across providers to develop that single point of entry. Because we've worked in counties, some, not very many have that, but a few do. And when they do, it, it really does increase both collaboration across providers, and then also makes it so much easier for individuals when they're ready to be able to access. Did you have something you wanted to add about that, too? I know we were just talking about that.
So, anybody in Genesee County, specifically, uh, unemployed on Medicaid can, can call Region 10 and get assessed over the phone. It is not as immediate as it used to be back in the day when we would be able to go over to, next to the Hurley Department, and then there would be a, a breakage. Are you here for a mental health assessment or a substance use disorder assessment? And get triaged right at that moment of time. And so, there's a phone, and then they call back with, with a scheduled appointment. So, the process takes place. But then, in Genesee County, we're unique. So, if you go to a provider and choose to go to a location, they're gonna do their due diligence to assist you right at that point with a peer recovery coach and get assistance with that individual to keep them in that treatment location also.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion or comments? Uh, Commissioner Kuzno?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, doctor, but, uh, I, I should know, but who are you affiliated with?
Oh, I'm at Michigan State University. I'm in University Outreach and Engagement. It's the office that I'm in. This work was funded through the state of Michigan, through the Techni- opioid technical assistance collaborative. It was a collaborative, uh, that we have with University of Michigan and Wayne State University, and we work together to provide these supports across the state.
Okay, and, Marlene, refresh my memory. How much money do we have to spend, have, available?
There, uh, at, at a total, fourteen million, thirteen to sixteen.
Over what period of time?
That will be approaching eighteen years. It comes within eighteen years.
Fourteen over eighteen?
Yes. And that's not including the two new settlements that have been signed on.
Yeah, okay, I, I guess, you know, I'm kind of a financial kind of thinking guy, and, you know, and I, I don't have any objections to anything you said. But I just look at, there's not enough money to do all this.
There's not enough money to do all of that.
My next question is, is then, uh, if all this can't be done, could you narrow it down to maybe the top three or four functions that you think it should, could be done and should be done?
Yes.
In high priority?
Yeah, so what we usually do, um, we approach as county by county, and some county, some counties have so, we work with counties who have, who are getting about ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars a year, right? There's very little they can do. We have very short list of recommendations that we give those counties. Um, in Genesee County, when we were working with Marlene and with the committee, we decided to go big, as you can tell. It's a lot of recommendations. Because then, the committee, which is comprised of a lot of experts who are in the county, can then identify and prioritize. And so, this is, this way, that committee can then say, "Okay, here are the big list of recommendations. And here are the ones that we feel like we can identify first." In some counties, we're able to develop a prioritized list. It was really hard to do that here in Genesee County because the needs are also interconnected. I think if I were to prioritize, I'd probably prioritize outreach and building that flexible, um, ability to meet needs, um, as well as probably addressing stigma and increasing education around these issues. Because again, you have a base of really good providers already. But the committee really can, I think that the committee's in a good position to be able to develop a prioritized list based on what they know as providers. Also, these organizations know what other grants they're applying for to fund additional programming. They know changes that are happening in the, um, in the medical system and the, um, what kinds of supports they're expecting to get and also lose. And I know that there, um, Marlene has been building the capacity for making sure there's a flexible set of funds that are available. So that if a provider, a key provider loses funding due to cuts to healthcare, that they can then be responsive to that. So, again, I think, given the, uh, importance of the committee as it is currently structured and the work that Marlene has put into developing a committee that's full of really, um, knowledgeable providers in the county, that, that's, that's why we just presented as a full set of recommendations. If you all would feel more comfortable with me prioritizing, I'm happy to do that and to develop a prioritized list. Um, but again, I would actually go back to the committee and say, "Okay, let's develop a prioritized list together," because that expertise at that committee is so strong.
Okay, but the reason, where I'm going with this is, I, two hours ago, I sat through another meeting that sounded just like this from coming from somebody else. And what I, this is just my opinion in general. Uh, in this county, everything is so siloed. And everybody is, I mean, we're throwing millions and millions and million, it just goes on at healthcare. And yet, the quality of health in this county is the worst in the state of Michigan. But yet, we spend more. And everybody here has heard me say this before, and thanks to, you know, Commissioner Wayhelle, he's helped me on some contacts with, uh, the Greater Flint Health Coalition. And so, uh, you know, I tagged the Support Community Facilitators. And that's where, you know, I'm kinda at with them at this point in time. You, you know, I know this is just, uh, abuse area where I'm talking about just health in general. You know, we're having a tremendous problem with, uh, the hospitals being overrun with emergencies, uh, people being in there that don't really need to be in there. Uh, we're having problems with, uh, as Mr. Commissioner Fullwell knows, a, a problem with nine-one-one and, uh, the ambulances being overwhelmed. Uh, you know, taking people that don't sometimes really need to go. Uh, but I, what, what I wanna see, and what I'm hearing, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound negative.
No, you don't.
But what I'm hearing right now is another silo. And I don't want that. Uh, so, uh, I know that, uh, you know, Commissioner Winfrey, when I was talking to Ananack just a little while ago, uh, you know, we have to update you on this, too. But, uh, what I'm talking about doing, and, and Marlene, pay attention, uh, I, you know, we wanna take, and I gotta talk to, uh, Del Rico here, Mr. Lloyd, about, uh, uh, doing a workshop to bring a lot of these proposals. You know, 'cause we, this county takes in, we got millages, we got Medicaid, we got money flowing out our ears, but things aren't being done right.
Because this.
And, and so, you know, I, I wanna take and, and, and I wanna, I don't wanna push you aside. I want you to be a part of that. I don't wanna exclude you and be a, a separate silo. So, I gotta, what I'm thinking is, is I gotta find a way to fit you in with maybe the direction of, uh, where, uh, I'm working with the Greater Flint Health Coalition and, and what we'll be presenting to the full board in the near future at a workshop to try to tackle some of these issues.
So, just so we can make sure that we're clarified, Dr. Nager's not here to silo anything. We, we, we solicited their help for research.
I understand that, Marlene.
Yeah, and so, and the steering team agenda, which is the next, uh, on this agenda to create, the steering team would then work with the Board of Commissioners to create a core remediation strategy for our county. The Greater Flint Health Coalition at this time is presenting to our city of Flint in hopes to get those dollars so that we can work in a total partnership.
Okay, so you're already working with them. I appreciate that knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, Kelly and I are supporting each other in spirit right here, right now, in the moment.
Okay.
So, uh, to be honest, uh, we've stayed, we stayed aligned no matter what. I honestly saw Jim leaving the building as I came in and we said hello.
Yeah.
So, uh, totally, we wanna take this information and share it with our other jurisdictions so they know we're the whole county.
Yeah.
You, and so, while I'm here, I'm gonna, if you guys don't mind, I'll, I'll close for us. I wanna make sure, you know, the tax foreclosure people are here, and I appreciate what they're doing. But I looked up the definition of stigma. And is, is a negative and unfair attitude or belief about a person or a group that is based on characteristics like a mental health condition, disability, or social trait, and involves social disapproval, stereotypes, and prejudice, which can lead to discrimination and cause people to feel shame or embarrassed, even when they're late on their tax money, when they relapse, when they utilize, and they don't know where to turn. And so, I'd like to grace you today and your team that was unable to come. See, we're Genesee County, and I'm very adamant about our county, and we're here to end the stigma. And ask for everything, and I hope to work in partnerships with all our jurisdictions because you're right, we can't do everything with just our money. And we wanna hub, we wanna have a safe place for humans in every area of the county, not just the city of Flint. I know people that live throughout the whole county that are, are in meetings with me, are hanging out, still may be using. And when she referred to the individuals with transportation, I want you, and leave you with this visual, at the wellness services area, you know, individuals, they have to bus there. And for them to come out of the city of Flint and come from Davison or Mount Morris, that travel on the bus could cause them to relapse. And so, they have to weigh their own justice scales of, "Am I gonna go and get a clean needle today in the services?" Or, "Am I gonna figure out how to cop some dope?" You know, all, all easy language with me and stay here in the area. And so, we really wanna try to meet humans where they're at so we can empower them and end the stigma. And so, I appreciate you and your team and what you do, and you've set some baselines for us to work upon when the committee is selected by you guys and appointed.
Do we have additional questions? Yes, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all the information. That was, that's, that's a lot. So, make sure you get some rest tonight. I, I, I'm looking at this, though, and I'm not seeing anything anywhere in here that talks really about prevention.
Mm, yes.
And, um, as several people know who met me over this, and we talked about this, I've, I think that's gotta be a part of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and my fear is, one, um, we don't have a clear objective in the end what success looks like in the end for, for this. We've got all these money, all, all this money coming in, and, uh, as a board, everyone has their hand out. You know, and I, and I trust us with it more than I trust any other organization because we collect all these millages throughout this county for health, for mental health. And I'm gonna tell you, we, like Commissioner Kuzno said, health-wise, we're, we're last, and we spend tons and tons of money. Because guess what? There's no driving force that's pushing this. We have all these organizations that we just shook our, give them, give them our dollars and say, "Oh, they're gonna take care of it." And we have no accountability, no way to track their accountability, instead of creating the positions in the organization within the county to correct these things. But I, back to what you presented us, is there a reason why we don't have anything as far as prevention in here, as far as that being a recommendation also?
The, when, the individuals that we talked to really were focusing on the supports people need to not die and to move into recovery so that they can have healthy lives. And so, because of that, the focus for Genesee County really was about treatment and prevention of harm, that harm reduction part, which is a, a type of prevention, but it's not the, it's not primary prevention. It's not prevention of, of use. There are, um, there are programs and there is evidence for certain types of primary prevention, prevention of use. And those can be really useful. I think that addressing some of the issues that were raised by those experiencing substance use disorder and the providers should be primary at this point. Um, should be the kind of first action at this point. And we have talked about primary prevention as being important. Once you get to a point where you have some stability, once those death rates are, are not as high, um, as they currently are. And so, saving people's lives now, getting better systems in place, I completely agree with you about not working in silos and making sure there are systems. That's why there are a lot of systems-oriented recommendations that were focused on making sure there's coordination across the county, making sure that providers are working together to develop these stronger systems, to have those systems be in place. Once those systems are stronger, then I, this is just my recommendation, which you don't have to, you can, you can leave it. But my recommendation is you support the building of these effective systems to per, to treat individuals who are currently living with substance use disorder while also addressing stigma so that people feel more comfortable reaching out to services and supports. And then, you can start looking at what kind of primary prevention activities do you want to implement throughout the county. It's kind of hard to do that when you have rates as high as they are right now, that primary prevention. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it is harder to do that within this context. And when people are dealing with such severe behavioral health issues as are present in the county, and again, there's a lot of trauma that people have experienced in addressing that trauma effectively. Again, kind of gets you to a point where I think you can start implementing that. But that said, primary prevention is an activity that can, is an appropriate activity for the use of these funds.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. My, my, my problem with, I understand what you're saying about treating it, but you're gonna keep having that number because guess what? You're not stopping the feet, the, the feet into it. You're not stopping the feet, the, the feet into it. You're gonna keep, you're gonna keep that number, you can treat, you can keep treating, treating, treating. But until we break that number of people coming in, cause we've got a large amount and then it narrows down, hopefully we treat and fix or help, you know, create a program that can help them straighten things out. That's where I, I look at this a little differently because you're, you, you know, it's like the cigarette companies, guess what? They're willing to tell you it's bad, they're willing to do everything else they can because guess what? They know they got twenty more started, a bunch of ten, eleven-year-old kids and they keep feeding them in. So without the prevention piece, I, I think we got this large amount of money and we're just gonna blow through this because guess what? We're not stopping the major cause, which is new users. So I, I, I think it's a combination, you can't stop treating people who need the help, which is very vital, you don't want anybody to lose their life.
Yeah.
But also, there's that portion where you eventually have to say, hey, guess what? We're gonna invest in preventing this and my, this is me speaking here, I can't speak for the board or you, but we eventually have to quit or slow down that rate that's entering this lifestyle. And I don't wanna call it a lifestyle because it's, it's, with most people, it's, once it starts, it's not a choice, it's just becomes, it's just what it is and it's, it's, it's a need that they, you can't handle, we all, most of us understand that. So, uh, I, I do appreciate everything, like I said, I, I'm more of for prevention to be part of this and we need to have discussions and I'm with Commissioner Kuzno that we need to get together and have some frank discussions as a board, what we wanna see. There was one time, uh, moving forward, I presented the fact that I would like to see these funds invested, then use the, the money generated from the interest of the majority of it to actually fund programs moving forward. Your presentation definitely got me thinking about a ton of stuff when you're talking about housing and all the other stuff. There's so many ideas that ran through my mind and I appreciate that for getting me thinking and getting us thinking. So thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If I could say just one last thing about that, the primary, the prevention piece, is that one thing, and, you know, there's a lot of research to document this, but I'll just base it on the people that we've talked to here and across the state. The vast majority of these individuals who are experiencing substance, really severe substance use disorder, substance use disorder was a part of their families growing up, right? So we can also, I think we can also think about how we combine substance use disorder treatment with prevention, if we're treating the whole family and working with the, the families of those individuals and working with the, the children as well and providing kind of wraparound services for families where there's substance use disorder. Because we can have prevention, say in schools or these other kinds of prevention programs, but if we're not supporting the family to move toward health and wellbeing, then those children are in the same place, um, in terms of that exposure to substance use disorder in their, within their home environment. And that's, um, again, a huge risk factor for those children.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome, Commissioner, Commissioner Flouelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to echo some of Commissioner Shoemaker's, um, statements, I also feel that prevention and education should be an important piece of this and I don't know if that's a factor in any other counties you work with, um, you know, not to oversimplify it, but, you know, in nineteen eighty-four, I watched a commercial that showed what your brain on drugs looks like. And I never touched them, right? But it, it, would it be important to get, like, get into the schools and educate them on opioids, you know? All of the pills that are, that are everywhere, right? And I know that's probably not the majority of how people, um, get into substance use disorder, right? But, but it can be one of those gateways, so to speak, to educate them. I mean, when I was in school, there was, there was a lot of visual aids and, and what certain types of behavior looked like as you got older. And as Commissioner Shoemaker said, it, are we perpetuating the cycle by just simply treating the symptom? You know, if, if you're tired of getting your nose broke, you stop getting in fights, right? And like we talked about the Health Department a while back, when they're talking about STDs, what, what can we do to educate the people to have safe sex, abstinence, what have you? And that does start at the schools. So just out of my curiosity, i- is there anywhere else in the state, and, cause you didn't talk a lot about education and prevention, it was mostly treatment. Uh, which is important, very important, but I'd be interested to know that, is there anywhere else in the state that you deal with that they, they're, they're getting into the community, they're getting into the schools and, and they're talking about prevention, education, the, the consequences of getting involved with opioids?
Yeah, there are some counties that have, um, either a primary focus or a secondary focus on those kinds of programs and I'm happy to provide some resources about evidence-based primary prevention programs, particularly those that are school-based.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have additional questions? Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for this robust research report. Did you say what the sample size was?
Uh, eighty.
Eighty, okay. I appreciate the fact that it's a holistic approach and you used, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs and all of that stuff. I echo what my colleagues have already said and I, I know Commissioner Wayhill and Commissioner Winfrey have heard this story that I'm gonna tell, they've heard it before. I just heard it last week from a gentleman from Seattle, Washington, who was here in Genesee County and he talked about a community of care and the story about the baby in the stream. And everybody saw this baby in the stream and they wanted to rescue this baby and provide all of this care for the baby because we are such a caring community. And then another baby came downstream and they did the same thing for this child. Six, seven, eight more babies came down the stream. Everybody in the community rallied around the babies to try to take care of them, to make sure that they grew up the way they should. And then all of a sudden, one person left the community of care and everybody else looked at that person and said, what, what are you, where are you going? We need you to be here to help care for all of these babies that are coming. And that woman said, I'm leaving the community of care because I'm going upstream to find out where these babies are coming from and why they're coming down to us like this. So that's what my colleagues, I think, are saying.
Yeah.
In terms of prevention. And, um, this thirteen million dollars is not gonna go very far.
Nope, it's not.
Given the comprehensive list of recommendations that you've made. So I wanna take you up on your offer of prioritizing those items, but I want you to do it with a sp- a special lens. I want you to do it with a lens that would help the county leverage this thirteen million dollars and sort of triangulate multiple problems. We have a problem with housing. We have a problem, like you said, treating the whole family with behaviors. And if we can do that at the same time we are treating this opioid problem, then I think we can get more bang for our buck.
I agree.
And so I wanna, I, I would love for you to help us prioritize using that lens. And that's it.
Thank you.
All right, do we have additional questions? Dr. Brown, that analogy was better even the second time. I want you to know. Cause it applies to a lot of things that we're working on.
It applies to a whole lot of things.
It does. Let me just, it's not a question, but if I could try to frame this from what I know as a, as an ad hoc member of the task force and that we call it, the current group's the task force, right? So, we've had the task force for a number of months, uh, months and months. It's, it's a loose group, um, people come and go. You are technical assistants attached to the task force. The task force are members of our own community.
Yes.
Providers, people with lived experience. Uh, I know the Health Coalition has at least a couple people that go to those meetings. They've been mentioned, so I thought I'd say that. So, the money's coming in, or it's come in, in part anyway. Task force established to talk about the money and how we're gonna get it out the door in different ways, potentially. You provide technical assistance, your piece is this qualitative assessment, so the recommendations come out of talking with the eighty people.
Yep.
And then one of the items down on our agenda is to move, take the next step, in my view, based on what I know, to create a more formal committee.
Yes.
That will now think about these recommendations, think about the prioritization of these recommendations, uh, and a whole bunch of other things, and then come to us with recommendations on how to, how to actually spend the money.
Exactly.
And the processes for doing a request for proposals.
Yep.
To outside groups and in, even inside departments, like the courts came a few weeks ago and got some dollars from us. So all of this is sort of leading to one of the agenda items that we have here. Did I say anything wrong, Marlene or Dr. Nager or Michelle?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, uh, Commissioner Brown?
There was one more thing that I forget, I, I'm just reading, um, this, it says, Genesee County ranks the highest in the state in overdose fatalities. And in twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, Genesee County had a rate of fifty overdose fatalities per one hundred thousand people. And then between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, we had a rate of three hundred ninety-seven point eight non-fatal overdose, overdose emergency department visits per one hundred thousand people. We gotta do something to make those, that's not good to be number one.
It's not good to be number one there, no, it sure isn't.
So, I mean, use that lens too when you prioritize.
Yes, for sure. And that's honestly why we went big with our recommendation. So knowing what those rates are currently, we felt like it was really important to represent the whole breadth of recommendations coming from the people that we talked, the eighty people that we talked to.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, task force members, we appreciate you. We, we will talk again, I am certain. Also under Communications, we have number twenty-five dash seven six two, Genesee County purchasing policy. I know that we have a copy in front of us. I don't know, Mr. Freeman, are we gonna have some discussion on this or you just?
Yeah, I emailed out a copy during the meeting last week and then, um, you guys asked that this be put on the agenda this week, so I just thought if you were going to have some discussion at the meeting, it would be easier if you had a physical copy in front of you. But our purchasing administrator is here, Crystal, our CFO, which is, we're purchasing as housed, is here. If you have specific questions, they're happy to answer those for you.
So I will open it up for questions if you want either of those individuals or anyone else to come to the microphone. Commissioner Lloyd, you had your hand up first.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Freeman, can you provide some additional context as to, that I asked for?
No, I think it was Commissioner Shoemaker primarily. I'll yield to you, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Please, thank you. Um, one of, one of the issues I had and, and, um, we, we discussed it and Mr. Freeman sent it to me and then, uh, Commissioner Lloyd said something we should be discussing and, and Commissioner Kuzno was also concerned is our emergency expenditures. It's part of our purchasing policy. So, um, Josh, uh, sent it out last week while I was sitting here, which I appreciated. It's, if you can see, it's quite the policy, makes a noise when you drop it even. But my concern was the fact is how many of these emergency purchases we keep seeing? And I, I'm just not comfortable with that relinquishing those type of dollars for every time we turn around there on an emergency purchase. And some of them, if just because, guess what? We didn't get them in in time and, uh, I think Mr. Kuzno and I talked, spoke about that last week when we approved something. And I would like, I wanted this brought up and we could talk about it now, we can sit there and have them create something that we think would be fair, or if you wanna leave it up to me to work with Mr. Freeman and Corporation Counsel to come up with, and purchasing to come up with something fair, but I, I wanted to get the ball rolling because we've seen far too many of these emergency purchases that we don't have a clue what's been bought before it's, guess what? It's here in our lap. And I, and I just don't think that's representing the taxpayer well.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, I, uh, in that, uh, vein, I, uh, had, I had a personal meeting with Josh, uh, and Crystal and Derek to explain, you know, why we've had a number of these, uh, uh, emergency purchases. And, uh, Mr. Freeman was quick to point out that there's about eleven out of, since the first of the year out of, I don't know, three thousand or five thousand purchases or whatever it was. So he kinda put a little reference on that. I did mention that, like, um, Mr. Shoemaker, that I'm concerned about the number. And I asked him to explain the, uh, the process of why the emergencies have been happening and the emergency policy. And, uh, you know, I'm not prepared to, uh, quote anything in this, but after it was explained to me, uh, how the system works, of how a, a request to, um, buy anything goes through the system, whether it's an emergency or whether it's just a normal purchase. It's looked through, first of all, it comes through, uh, to, uh, Freeman as the director of the board and then it goes through a series of, uh, everybody else that has to look at that particular resolution. It's, uh, people like Crystal, it's legal, it's, uh, risk management, et cetera. And they all look at that and then they make a determination whether, uh, they've, whoever's requesting the purchases provided enough information to put it on the board, whether it's an emergency or the other, they send it back and they have to clarify and bring it back. And, you know, it goes through a lot of hands before it ever comes up to us, which I knew that system was there, but, you know, in line of, uh, the discussion last week with the emergency purchases, I was really interested in how that worked. Now, uh, Mr. Getzinger happened to be in, so I invited him to, uh, you know, join in on the conversation. But I'm comfortable with it, uh, with what's going on. Me personally, I would invite, uh, you or anybody else, uh, to sit down with those three and, and talk about it. And if you still feel like we may, need to make some changes in the policy, I'd be more than happy to take a look at that. But did I fairly make that clear, Gary, as to how that system works?
Yeah, I thought there were a lot of checks and balances along the way. We all were kinda shocked when they said there were only eleven emergency purchases out of the three thousand, I think was the number. But as they explained the process, it's very efficient, um, there's lots of places, uh, and, and it's there to, uh, um, make sure that all our policies are being followed and all the right partners are, are in the mix, it seems. It was pretty impressive what I saw.
So I wanna make sure, are you finished, Commissioner? You yielded to him and now I've got Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my question is with these, so if we're going through this whole process, which, if we're going through supposedly, the purchasing administrator will make the request for the purchase. No? No, let me finish here. So, it's basically the same process, we're just, we're speeding it up. But are they going out for bids then? Did all of them, all the eleven go out for bids?
So Derek can speak to this, but you know, some of these things were, um, emergencies, like at the jail, the sewage pumps quit working. So sometimes there's not an opportunity to go out to bid because you've gotta have sewers at the, at the jail. Some of them dealt with, when we had jumping, you know, we had to expedite, you know, with the consultant. Derek can speak to the, I think there was eleven this calendar year, I think there was sixteen for the fiscal year, correct?
Would you identify yourself and then?
Sure, Derek Jones, purchasing administrator. So, um, in the purchasing policy, specifically section three, one oh nine, where it addresses emergency procurements, it basically states that, um, an emergency is defined as any type that exists, uh, if there's a threat to public health, welfare, or safety. And so when reviewing the requests, we basically use that as a test. Josh said that as relates to the sewer, so we're looking at a threat to public safety. There was an engineer that was hired because of, there were bricks, um, that were falling from, excuse me, from the jail, another threat to public safety. So, as, uh, the commissioner stated, there is, while the department states that it is an emergency, going through the routing process, we, when it comes to my queue, I just make sure that it does fall within the parameters of what is set in the purchasing policy.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
So, as an example, um, the bricks falling off the jail, we didn't, need to be repaired, we didn't send it out for bid.
So when practical, uh, we tr- we try to. And it's, that's addressing the policy as well.
I understand, but what I'm saying is for these emergency purchases, what, one of the excuses is why it doesn't go in front of us, cause we, it's time sensitive, obviously, we need to take care of it. So here's my question, if I, not saying anybody here in this town, county or anywhere else is unethical- If I not saying anybody here in this town, county, or anywhere else is unethical, but how do we determine who the vendor is then that takes care of that? Could that be abused? And yes, it could be, so there's no way it could not be abused by whoever is determining that that, you take care by that individual. So this is part of the emergency policy, which does upset me. If you're not sending it out for bid, and we haven't pre-approved certain vendors before the year to take care of these things at a fixed rate or a rate we've agreed upon beforehand, because there's plenty of departments, we say, hey, we're gonna contract you, with you up to this amount, and this is what service costs are gonna be, some of these contracts could go out there and could be abused by somebody appointing someone, guess what, who is a friend, or there's more nefarious matters in place. So I have, I, like I said, I have a problem with it, guess what, we are, we are here, one of the main responsibilities of county commissioners, make sure the financial stability of Genesee County is handled. Spending money and make sure it's spent correctly and fairly is one of our biggest responsibilities, and I feel as a commissioner. Like I said, there are other ones, though, that weren't as time sensitive that have come across to us, and to be very clear, let's be clear, we have eleven so far this year with the tenth month, yes, it's not done, for the calendar year, yes, it's sixteen. But guess what, if it takes just one that is done wrong, or with some malice or something else, guess what, we're liable for that. We might not actually have to go to court or do anything like that, but we have that on our conscience, I have that on my conscience. You know, I, I'm the individual down here, you guys always roll your eyes and look at, I get it at times, because I'm, I am concerned with every dollar, every penny most of the time. It does frustrate me, because I know how hard our residents work for those dollars, and we should be watching them that closely. So I'm sorry when I see these things, and I'm sorry that, guess what, I voted against giving other individuals power assigned for certain amounts, up to thirty thousand dollars, because I believe that's our responsibility, and we should be handling it. So I would love to sit down with you, not to hold this meeting up anymore tonight. But please, I'd love to sit down with you and Crystal, I'd love to discuss this further, please just send me a couple dates at work for both of you. I will make sure I'm here and we can discuss this further. Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Do we have another discussion, comments?
I just have one.
Commissioner Winfrey.
To do with the emergency purchase, but some months ago, this board adopted a DEI in all policies, policy. I don't see it evident in this purchasing policy, and I know for a fact that we put one together that was cleared by legal, that's not in here, it's not evident.
It's in there, because you, before it was even adopted, it had to go through the DEI. And so I believe in the preamble of the policy, it had the terminology that was approved through DI.
It's the first paragraph, top page, under the?
That was not the statement that was adopted by legal, that was cleared by legal.
Okay, but then I will go back to them.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Freeman.
So the policy didn't require, the Equity in All Policies policy did not require a specific statement. It required specific steps to take when considering drafting policy. You, you and I can talk if you want offline on that, and I'll show you the copy of the policy. It didn't require a specific policy statement in every policy. Initially, we started that way, and it ended up changing through the DEI Commission.
Who changed it?
DEI Commission.
The DEI Commission changed it?
Yeah. Yeah, they created the Equity in All Policies policy.
So, so I think what you're saying, what we voted on did not include and approved, did not include a statement that had to be placed in all of our existing policies, is that what you're saying, Mr. Freeman?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and, but I, it was my understanding that DEI Commission was supposed to draft the statement.
That was the, that was the initial discussion, but it morphed, and I wasn't part of that discussion in the DEI Commission, but it morphed through that. I'm just looking for the policy. Yeah, it's O-two dash zero-zero-four, Equity in All Policies policy. And it, what that policy requires is that when crafting a policy, that we consider certain questions in the crafting of that policy. I'll forward you a, a copy of it.
Please do.
Okay.
Mr. Winfrey, are you, you're good?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll hold off until I get a copy.
Thank you. Mr. Getzinger.
Yes, I just wanna address a little bit what Commissioner Shoemaker said, and it's, it's a good point in that what we saw was the approval, I wasn't sure, did it, was part of the matrix, did it talk about who was being hired to do the service, or was it just to approve the service?
Yes, it had the actual vendor.
It has, okay, I wasn't sure of that, after you pointed that out. But it, but hopefully, with the way, with the the number of people that it goes through, your concerns should be addressed by each, by one of them anyway, but not all of them, but, I mean, it starts out with, with Josh, and then it goes to the risk person, and then it goes, I believe, to Crystal, and then purchasing, and so there's a lot of players that should catch something if there are some irregularities going on.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
If I may, so I clear, I'm sorry, I turned my mic, I'm sorry. So to clarify what my thought is, so there's no misconception. You can, you can look over all you want, who's giving you the bid, make sure they're doing everything right, but who decides who gets that job could be where the issue is, and that's slightly where I'm concerned. That's slightly one of my concerns. But we'll talk, like I said, I really appreciate the time, and let's move forward, and I'll listen, and then if I have more issues, we'll bring it back up later. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Any other discussion on this, or questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, sir. All right, we're moving on to Old Business, Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-one-four-four, Approval of a Request to Create the Opioid Settlement Steering Team Committee.
Move it.
It's been moved, is there support?
Or?
Moved and supported, do we have discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Fluehling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, Marlene. So really, the one question I have at this point, I had a pretty lengthy meeting about this last night, it was great information. With the formation of the Steering Committee, will this replace and dissolve the Advisory Committee? And here's why I ask that, as I shared yesterday. So I've been to, in my other job, I've been to the same house for the same family or same person, two, three, four times, five times, for overdoses. Captain Cronk right in the back has probably been at a couple of them, and he's been at way more than I have. My fear would be, if there's the two separate committees, timelines can be extended, things won't get expedited. So, and, and if there's people out there that need this help, because I sit on other boards that have advisory committees and policy committees and all kinds of things, it really slows down the process. So my, my hope would be that the Steering Committee is it, it's that, it's the Steering Committee and us.
Exactly what it'll be, and that advisory will meet with them annually, and the Steering Committee and the Board of Commissioners will be there, and we'll have events with anybody that's just interested to hear what we're doing, and just letting them know what's happening with our metrics, how our money's been spent, and that's it. They're just, anybody that's interested in opioid settlement, but the Steering Committee specifically will be appointed by you guys. The bylaws that are presented here are the, what Corporation Counsel and us went through the last couple of weeks, we've cleaned it up. So I hope you guys have read it, it's very specific, how many members, what positions would be hosted from there. The handbook, we took the charter that was issued by Michigan Association Counties, and we made this, so you guys could give this to anybody you want to be as an applicant also through this appointment process. And this will give information to any eligible candidate of what that commitment will entail. And that commitment will then entail just working with you guys and presenting some core remediation strategies and how to go approach that. I also will not be part of that at all, I will literally coordinate, get with purchasing when we're posting stuff, give them evaluations, and that's exactly how that committee will be. So it'll just be the Steering Committee after it's appointed by you all.
Okay, if I may. May. Commissioner Fluehling.
So you, you did mention there that you're gonna meet with the Advisory Board once a year?
Hopefully, like, so in other, in other areas, we have, you know, Steering Committees, and then advisory is just anybody that really just has any interest, if they ever wanna have any open forums, which we may end up just doing through our own end of stigma. But normally, it will allow everybody to just come in together, get some data metric, understanding of what we've been doing with the dollars and what we haven't.
So I guess, if I may, just help me out like I'm a toddler here, explain to me the role of the Advisory Committee going forward.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Just hearing stuff of what we've shared with them, that's it.
Okay, now if I may, just one more. And this might not be a question for you, maybe it's for this board, but with the makeup of the Steering Committee, is it the intent, and, and I, and I know what, what the roster shows, and that, and that's great, but is it the intent to exclude anyone that may be a potential vendor? As far as, I'm talking GHS, Health Coalition, Health Department, anybody that's gonna provide these services and accept money from the opioid settlement, are they gonna be excluded from membership on that Steering Committee?
Well, it's based on whatever you guys decide, but I, I would say yes.
We do have a separate form that everyone who ends up, that we approve, has to sign before they start participating that they don't have a conflict of interest.
That's accurate.
Or if they feel that they have one, they have to declare it.
That's accurate.
So we, we have had a fair amount of discussion about that particular issue. I think I might have lost some friends in the task force meeting when I said there are people here that could benefit, because they were executives of agencies, and, you know, I, I meant it in a friendly way, that we gotta be ethical about it, and that's how we got to this forum and incorporated it into this new team.
Well, I know that, you know, the Sheriff's Department might end up with a member, because you have a member from law enforcement, but my, my concern is that a, a part of the, the study and, you know, maybe the mission going forward of the Steering Committee is something like mental health. Well, we've got a ten million dollar a year, I think, but I'm gonna talk to Crystal about that a little bit. Mental health millage. So I, I can't see opioid settlement money going towards mental health when, when you've got a huge millage that, that can do the same.
That's, that's exactly, it's collaboration with our GHS partners, identifying what their targets are for that fiscal year, calendar year, and what they're aiming, and then hopefully being able to work with the Steering Team also to identify, just like it was mentioned by Dr. Nager, co-occurring disorders, a lot of the same population, and so, yeah, we shouldn't be leveraging one, maybe not the other. We wanna tap our assets first, first and foremost.
Well, yeah, you make the most out of your money by eliminating redundancies, for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
How are you this evening?
Blessed.
Thanks for meeting with me last week, I really appreciate it. My, my concern is the, the committee composition here. We've got this very detailed, and it doesn't leave us any room for anything we'd wish to maybe change or something broader outside the spectrum for someone who we might think is, might provide a benefit to the committee that doesn't fit in one of these categories.
We left elective positions open, so eleven members total.
Yep.
And right here is eight that are listed as specifics, which would leave some elective positions open for whoever, and a diverse, as is indicated, for any local priorities and lived experiences.
Should, should we?
We can write that in there.
No, I just wondered, should we have it in there, that's what I'm saying, to explain that it's, that they're, they're open, you know, for?
So three, three open spots?
Large.
At large, yes.
That's a good way of phrasing it.
Well, I was relying on Commissioner Wayhill Smith, but look, Brian beat you to it, look at that.
Does someone wanna offer that in the form of an amendment, or?
I would, I would offer that.
I'll support it.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported that we amend the, the, are we calling these bylaws?
These are the bylaws you guys are putting in?
Yeah, okay, that we add to the section on membership, that there are three open seats or at-large seats, I guess you said. Do we have discussion on that motion?
One thing.
Yes, Commissioner Fluehling.
Just to get the opinion of those most heavily involved, is eleven too many? Is that cumbersome?
So it started with fifteen, and that's, that's where we dropped it to eleven to keep it a, a little bit evened out. And so, thank you for, for saying that too, because it was brought up last week, you know, by Commissioner Shoemaker, and just taking into consideration how much time it takes to meet with each individual, going through everything, and then coming back, so I appreciate it. I feel eleven will be more than, more than manageable, but thank you.
He says that because he sees how the nine of us, how we interact, and that's?
Well, you get more than fifteen, you got a convention.
Not quite to eleven.
Me, though, and we wanna make sure that we're getting an, a human, you know, interest.
Additional discussion on the motion to amend, Commissioner Lloyd.
But it's gonna be fifteen, not eleven, I mean?
Oh, I thought we were?
Eleven.
No, it's eleven.
Eleven, did you get a typo book?
So which ones are three at-large? I mean, what are we doing?
So it, it, it adds to eight, the ones that are on there add to eight of the eleven?
Okay, 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 but it doesn't reflect that it's at?
Right, we're making it explicit that there are three at-large seats.
Thank you. I just read the, well, I read the whole list, but I didn't count them, and I looked up and saw eleven and heard three, I'm like?
I only know that because Marlene and I met at eight-thirty on Monday and made the edits to that, this section.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried. We're back to the main motion of the approval of the overall opioid settlement steering team. Do we have discussion on the main motion? Oh, yeah, yeah, there was a motion, it was on the floor. So you moved it, someone over here supported, but I also heard Chair, or Mr. Winfrey support it.
That's for the amendment.
No, that was originally, he moved it, support, and there might have been another support.
I'm gonna lend you my hearing aids sometime, Mr. Freeman. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is carried, thank you to you and the Task Force members for moving us along. Under New Business, we have Resolution twenty-two-five dash one-two-six-two, Approval of the Recommendation of Genesee County Surveyor to Appoint Members to the Remonumentation Peer Review Committee Members. It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, oh, Commissioner Dr. Brown.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not on the committee, but I do have a question about this, in looking at the, the appointees. So my first question is, it looks like it's Paul Brown, Greg McGarty, McGardle, Gilbano, Kevin Cleaver, and Mark Van Raymond. So, hi there, Ken, how are you?
Good.
Good. Are these folks regular appointees, and how long are they good for on this committee?
Will you identify yourself for the record?
Ken Clea, G.I. S. Director. The, it's one-year term, they're basically, they have a lot of experience surveying in the county, and the county surveyor makes the selection, so.
Okay, and so they, they have been on consistently, I guess, for how many?
There's been a little bit of change. Generally speaking, they're kind of retirees or semi-retired.
Okay.
Commonly, not all of them, but, so, you know, some of them kinda move on, and then, so it's, it hasn't stayed exactly the same, but it's similar set.
Are, are these volunteers?
Uh, there's a small fee involved, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, I think, per session. They usually do two per year typically.
And just for, for my own knowledge and education, can you explain what remonumentation actually means?
So, back originally in the eighteen twenties, the county was surveyed, and there was monuments placed every quarter mile, on a quarter mile grid around the sections. So there's about two thousand to three thousand that were originally set. And so those were, those were systematically, the program started to systematically revisit those in about nineteen ninety-two. So that process took like twenty years, twenty years plus to revisit all of those original monuments. If they were there, they would reset a new monument, if they weren't there, they would determine where it was supposed to be and set a new monument. Monument is a post in the ground at ground level with a brass cap on the top, says, you know, Genesee County Monument. And then everyone has an ID and so forth. So a few years ago, they went back, and the state directed to re-infill those, so then in the interior corners of the sections, they are now going through and setting monuments that were never, a place where monuments were not set, so that there'll be a complete grid of thirty-seven-hundred-ish, I believe, corners. And so that's the process we're in now, we're three to five years out from having that complete. And that is paid for through money that comes into the, to the Register of Deeds for recordation fees. It goes to the state, the state doles that back out as grant money, so it's essentially a hundred percent grant funded. I say essentially because, and there's some administrative work that we have to do that really, not a lot, not a big portion, but a, a certain portion of that is not really accounted for, so.
So we collect the fees from the Register of Dees to do this process, and that money is sent to the state, and then the state grants it back to us?
Correct, that's my, that's my understanding of the, you know, I'm not sure, maybe Corporation Counsel could, or somebody? Correct. That's my, that's my understanding of the, you know, I'm not sure, maybe Corporation Council could, or somebody could explain the language, but
Okay.
that's my understanding of how it works. So the amount of money we have will vary each year depending on what those fees, fees that we received.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Do we have additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2305, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Global Vision Technologies Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $49,833.44 to provide for fam care software hosting and maintenance. The term of this agreement is October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. The cost will be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
Report.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Can someone explain this, what Global Vision Technologies Inc. does for us, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Wilson, Juvenile and Probate Court Administrator. Global Vision Technologies is the case management platform for the juvenile probation office. Houses a substantial amount of data relative to juvenile delinquency matters and specific juvenile case notes and risks and needs assessment, the whole gamut of information that's used by the probation department.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Okay. Next question is, is this information stored onsite, or are we cloud-based with this information?
It, I don't know the exact specifics of that, but it's a vendor that hosts the data. And I don't believe it's on an onsite server, but just a small update for context, if I may. The State Court Administrative Office is offering a statewide solution to all juvenile courts. So we'll be discontinuing this vendor, and we'll have a free solution. We're set to go with that process in April. So trying to lock in the data we have to transition it to the new, to the new platform, which is going to be state housed.
And, and obviously, there's an out clause for us to get out of this in April. We just have to notify them so many months in advance.
Correct. We've had frank conversations with GBT, and they understand, they're aware of the statewide solution. There was a bidding process with Michigan State Court. And so, no, we don't have to, we don't have any, just the standard contract that the county has was what was used, and we have the, you know, termination for convenience and notice, so we don't have any. I don't envision this going the whole fiscal year, but, so.
One last one.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Shoemaker. Turning into Del Rico.
Everybody does it. My next question is, why wasn't this brought to us earlier, considering it's October 1st?
This was on the September agenda, and then I got a inquiry from County IT with some specific questions. We didn't get back on track until now, but it was a, it was a position before the October date.
So, please, my thought is we could start these things way in advance. You know, it's like, if my job, I handle a realist, my goal is not to take the customer up to the point where they have to go over the date and they're continuing with us, so. That's just, you know, two weeks, we should be dealing with it far enough out that if there are questions, they're not just yours. I see this a lot, and everyone knows, this is one of my pet peeves is, you know, it's not that hard to prepare in advance to make sure we get this, so, but, thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you, Sam. We have a motion on the floor. Is there additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2410, approval of a purchase order to Printing Systems Incorporated for the fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $210,000 to provide for the printing of ballots for various elections. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
Report.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2421, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and ESRI in an amount not to exceed $45,014 to provide for annual software maintenance. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
Support.
And supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just a quick question. What do we maintain? What software are we maintaining?
Ken, can you speak to that?
Good morning. Ken Clea, GIS Director. The software, HESRI software, that's the GIS software that we use, and it's, this is a pooled licensing agreement. So it's not, that includes a few other county entities, including road commission, drain commission, so forth. That's all under that one agreement. By pooling, we save about 11, $10,000, $11,000. And it's minimal, minimal work on our side, other than writing one check to the vendor, so that we recoup the cost from the other participants.
Thank you so much. Do we have additional discussion?
Commissioner Brown.
I just want to publicly thank Ken for the work that he did on some mapping for all of us recently, and having that visual really helped, so thank you for your work.
To be fair, my staff did most of that work.
Well, thank you to your staff.
Let them know we thank them.
Absolutely.
And you for your leadership. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2437, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in an amount not to exceed $85,000 to provide behavioral health services for youth at the Genesee County Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this agreement is October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Move it.
Support with a question.
Moved and supported with a question. I'll go to Commissioner Fueeling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Sam, and this is going to be for Sam and Crystal, actually. For both of them. So this is, good evening. For items five, six, and nine. Is it, just make sure I'm clear and I understand. We're paying Genesee Health Systems a total of $490,000 for this service? For these three services?
The, those are the not-to-exceed contract amounts.
Right, but we're paying them.
That'd be correct, yeah. And just for context, these are, again, not to exceed, but they're also, you know, only paid for items that aren't covered by GHS or insurance, but no, that's right.
So my question is to Crystal, they've got a $10 million millage here, right, for mental health services, GHS?
There was, it was about 10.8 million in the 2024 audit, and I looked at the 2026 budget, and it's up to about 12 million.
12 million. So does anybody know why we're paying them to provide services that they get a millage for of 12 million dollars?
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that. So the millage was very specific in the uses.
Okay.
And I don't believe these, this particular use falls under the language that was voted on.
So we voted for mental health services, correct?
Very specific mental health services. It wasn't, it wasn't what you believe, and I probably believe it should have been, is more of a broad definition of it. It was very specific activities. I'll provide you a copy.
Yeah, if you could, give me a copy of that millage, because I'm looking at, I mean, you look right here. You've got behavioral health, mental health, therapy. Seems like that'd be a really good place to spend it.
I can't speak for Genesee Health System nor the Foundation of the Millage, but I know that, that discussion about millage money didn't quite fit for the scope of work. But again, I can't speak with more particularity on that question.
I mean, it's just my concern, because this is, you know, we pay 12 million dollars for a millage, and this is 10 million dollars a year we're paying to them, so. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, I'm still a little confused on those answers to Commissioner Fueeling, because I had the same type of questions. Where is the money coming from that goes to the juvenile? It's not coming from the millage. Is that what you're saying?
For what's on the agenda? They're requesting money out of the childcare fund to fund these contracts with GHS.
Not the millage.
Correct.
Correct. This is, these are all childcare-funded contracts.
Through the state.
Grant.
Okay, all right, okay, I got it now. I understand it. Yeah, I'm fine.
Is there additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just say one, why are these late?
Thank you, Commissioner. It's, I didn't want to espouse the details, but I was working with Genesee Health Systems' legal team to iron out the firing points of the contract. Just as a general, as a general statement, you're right. I mean, I'm not a proponent of that type of timeliness either. I take full responsibility for the fact that it wasn't for this board in a more timely fashion. It is part of the childcare fund. You know, structured as such, but I agree with you. It should have been done before this in a more timely fashion.
Sam, I really appreciate that. I hope you know, thank you. I really appreciate that. I just, like you said, this has happened. We've had some that, this is mild. We've had some that were brought to us four months after the fact. So I do appreciate it. I just, as our staff moves forward, we know these are generally things we handle every year. It's not like it's something new and it came up, oh, we got an opportunity for this grant. Okay, yeah, it's going to start retroactive or something like that. We know these are coming. So it's just the fact is, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, lack of preparedness, or you guys have worked, or, I mean, I don't want to say with some that it's just, you know, lack of caring or laziness, but the fact is, we know it's coming every year, and it's just very frustrating to see that, you know, every time. You know, especially when grant dollars are tied to it. So I appreciate your honesty and moving forward. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, I just, Sam, thank you for that direct and honest answer. I appreciate that as much as Mr. Shoemaker does. That says a lot about your character and your integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion on the motion? It's for item number five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2438, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in an amount not to exceed $65,000 to provide mental health assessments, evaluations, and services for youth on probation. The term of this agreement is October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2444, approval of a grant award from the Michigan State Police in the amount of $250,000 to provide for a residential substance abuse treatment program. Genesee County's jail. It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2447, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $263,050 to provide for responsive services for victims of crime as described in the attached award letter.
I move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2464, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Genesee Health System in an amount not to exceed $340,000 to provide multi-systemic therapy and anger management trauma group therapy at Genesee County's Juvenile Justice Center. The term of this agreement is October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2527, approval of a grant award from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation in the amount of $133,000 to provide for demolition assessment at the former Genesee County Administration Building.
I move it.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I would just like to start and say, thank the Mott Foundation, their dedication to the city of Flint is. I've been critical at times, but I will tell you, this is greatly appreciated, and their interest in helping us with this is, I really appreciate it, so.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2567, approval of a proposed amendment to the Genesee County Board of County Commissioners bylaws to allow for a consent agenda.
Move it.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? Mr. Freeman, you want the floor?
If I could, yep. Before you is an updated resolution that kind of lists out the order of business, which is 2.3 in your bylaws. And I just want to point out some changes here that are different from the resolution that's in your packet, because I had a misunderstanding, and I, we got some clarification today. So.
I can speak to it.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, 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 you go. I'll speak to it. So a couple of things that accounted for, a couple of things beyond the consent agenda. One is at the bottom of it, where it says Commissioner remarks. I've had two Commissioners ask me about making sure that we have space at the end of the agenda for Commissioners to make a closing comment, or to mention something that's happening in your district. I believe Commissioner Gadsinger, you were one of those, and so that accounts for that. And then not losing, didn't want to lose the reports of the standing committees, so left that on there, but I also did not want, I wanted to make sure that there's also, has on our agenda now, a report of the chairperson as well, and list, that's on our agenda now. I think that's appropriate when there is one. And didn't want to come back and adjust it again, so that rounds out the changes. So this will be the new flow of our meeting agendas for our meeting of the whole.
Do we have discussion?
Thanks, and thank you, Josh, for calling, for the clarity, to make sure that we had, that it was captured as thought. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, I was just, I guess I'm curious as to why we need to put consent agenda on there. What's the need to do that? I mean, we've always had the option to do that or not do it. Does this mean we're always going to do it?
Yes, so that's the thought. It, it, yes, that's the thought, that instead of us going through all of the committees, which we do on a night like this, that it'll allow us, as a kind of a staple of our meetings, to move it all, you know.
Well, you know, I'm one to always, you know.
You may.
May I go back and forth with the Chair? You know, I've always been one to expedite things, but I know that throughout the years, the, whoever is the Chair, they've kind of, you know, they've always wanted to do this or that, or this way, a different way, set up the subcommittees one way, like we're doing them now. Sometimes it's a committee of the full. So I just, you know, I just, I don't know, I guess I'm just baffled why we need to change the bylaws when, you know, because I know in the past, and I've been one too, that I know that if the public is listening, which not many people are listening to these things, there's certain people that do, that they listen to the committee of the whole and the full board. And so various people have wanted to read each one off so that the people thought we were working, and they knew what we're talking about, instead of just doing the consent agenda. Now, I know the last couple of weeks, I've done a consent agenda, and there's reason for that, just to expedite things. I guess, I just, you know, do you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Chair?
I do. Just so you know, I could go either way on it, honestly.
So could I. I'm just wondering why we need to do anything.
Yeah, one of the thoughts was, is that, so in our committee meetings, and I remember back under last Commission, I know that two Chairs ago, we had started reading something in the committee of the whole, where we would reference, hey, you know, we've already discussed these in committee, you know, for the, you understand, because we talked about that, right? And so as a way of kind of like, maybe moving the items a little, you know, faster, if you will.
I'm all about that.
Yeah, but, but I totally understand what you're suggesting in terms of, because you would kind of, you would lose that in terms of the public.
What it would require is, is, you know, in the future, you have a new Chair, and they say, well, I don't want to do it that way, so that then it would require them to talk to the board and change the bylaws again. Whereas the way we do it now, it's just flexible.
Yeah, and that could happen for, not just with a Chair, but it could happen with any member of the board, you know, decide, hey, they want to change something that relates to the, and propose it. But it's just, you know, I'm not lobbying one way or another, honestly, on it. It was just a thought that we'd be able, you know, versus going back through all of the committees again, each Chair reading them all, we've done it.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from on that. I was just, I guess, curious why we wanted to do it in the bylaws, you know. why we wanted to do it in the bylaws. You know, I don't sit on this committee, so I won't be, go ahead.
I can answer that more directly. So, that if it was the will of the body, that then our agenda will reflect that automatically versus, like, the last couple of weeks, it's just kind of been like, you know, therefore was, hey, we didn't need to just move consent agendas. Hey, we need to just get this done.
Right, right.
Mainly so the agenda would just appear that way, and then things that folks wanted to separate, they could separate, or, you know, we can go through and read each one, which I'm not opposed to.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, is, is if, you know, say I, as the finance chair, I decide I want to read it, I'm not gonna, I'll do a consent if there's 20 things there, but, you know, if there's three or four, and there's one or two that I really want to read, then, or any of the chairs, if they chose, they could still do that. They don't have to do the consent.
Why, why don't we, I mean, if, if it's the will of the body, we can, I mean, again, seriously, we can leave it the way it is, and each chair still makes that decision if they want to do that. And I'm totally fine with that. I just, I just wanted to present it.
Sure, no, I understand where you're coming.
Just for consideration and discussion, but I'm okay either way, honestly.
Okay, well, I don't vote on this, but if it does pass through this, if it goes to the full board next week, then I'll, I'll vote no, but...
Okay, so, so that's your preference, so I'm, I'm okay.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
So, we have Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions. If we did go to the consent agenda, does that still mean we're allowed to pull items out beforehand? Is there anything written in there that guarantees that, us that right to pull certain resolutions out?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what separations are all about. You, you, you move, you can move everything for the consent agenda, and then if there are things you want to pull out of that, then anyone can separate if they want to have a discussion, or I presume if a chair wants to cover them all individually, they can separate everything on their agenda.
What, here's, this is my concern. What if a small fraction of the commissioners want to pull something out, but the chair at that time is not interested in that? Is there something written into our bylaws that state that if it's requested, is it allowed, to ask be allowed to be pulled out?
I have not looked at the bylaws, but I don't believe that there is. And when I have seen this procedure employed, everyone has an opportunity to make a separation, not just the chair, the respective chairs.
We could, if we would look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, I will. I'll make a note of it.
Commissioner Flue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the corporate counsel, I believe that, that's a part of Robert's rules, is it not? If you run the agendas, it's consent agenda, any commissioner can separate anything they want.
I believe you're correct.
If I, if I may, just...
You may. Commissioner Shoemaker, and then Commissioner Winfrey.
What might be an option, it pleases the board, because here's, here's my thought on it, is you would do the consent agenda by committee and let the chair decide at that point if they want to, and if the board did it, so you would have a consent, a consent agenda, like you'd list consent agenda by committee, instead of it being on here, it 'd just be committee, consent agenda, and then before the meeting, they could determine if that's what they wanted to do by committee. But, my main goal is like, when we have a presentation like this tonight, very long presentation, that we would do it on nights where we're not going to have as much discussion. It would be put on those nights that we are having a consent agenda, because this is the night generally we talk, we speak, and if most people want to see a presentation, guess what? They're tuning into the full board of commissioners meeting on top of it. So, I'm for, I'm, I'm for adding it and allowing the chairs to decide, you know, if they, of each board, if they want to consent agenda that night or not. And I don't know if we need to add language of that for not, or not, but I really like to see on top of it, though, this was, I agree with this, because it allows us to start discussion on this, because there's a couple of nights we've brought proposals up, or presentations up. We've had three, three of these in a night, and it's on a subcommittee night. We want to talk, and this is the night we actually have conversation about these issues, and we clear them out, or we send our staff with, you know, marching orders, hey, can you get me this? Can you do that? So, my recommendation moving forward would be whether you do consent agenda or not, which I think is fine, as long as the chairs of each committee decide that, but is to move these on nights that we have actually a full board meeting. One, most people don't look through our subcommittee meetings when they want to watch something, to Commissioner Kuzno's point, that if we don't read it, you know, obviously they're not gonna know, but these things that we've spent money on or we've spent time on, I think it's just very important that they would be on our board committee nights, and it would not keep our staff here as late, because guess what? They would be the nights that we are doing, because if, let's say we had this proposal night. Tonight, if it was a full board meeting, we probably would have consent agenda most things, because guess what? It's a later night, because we had this hour-long proposal. So, I would like to see these, and I'd put, I'd put a motion on the floor if we could, that from now on, anything that's a, gosh, what word? Presentation, or large, larger, like if they come to report something, like a report discussion, that these be put on full board meeting nights moving forward. So, I'm gonna put that motion out there, because it's been so many times we've done this, and I want to have conversation, but I know you guys are tired, so we kind of back off, so.
We do have a motion to adopt this.
Okay.
Should we, I recommend we dispense with this first, maybe?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, then, then that would be coming from the floor.
Then you can offer that from the floor. Do we have additional? I'm sorry, Commissioner Winfrey, you had...
Yeah, yeah, I support the proposal. I just have one problem, and that is, because we have separate committees with a few commissioners on each committee, I would suggest that we go back to the Committee of the Whole format. Otherwise, you know, we're here, you know, whether we're on the committee or not, but we don't have to be here. And if we're not here, that means that we're gonna have a lot of separations, you know, at the full board meeting. So, I would support this, you know, with the caveat that we revert back to a Committee of the Whole format for, for committees.
So, Commissioner Lloyd.
I think Dr. Brown, if you don't mind.
Oh, I didn't see. Did you?
I was just pointing to Commissioner Winfrey.
Okay. Two, two, two pieces. One is that, one, I'm going back a second. One is that I don't want to take the ability from any commissioner or chair to do what Commissioner Kuzno was just suggesting. I know that there have been conversations as mentioned, so I brought it for us to have discussion. I appreciate this discussion. So, if there's, you know, you know, I don't want to take that ability from commissioners or chairs if, if there's value in, you know, in the meeting, folks going through, you know, whatever they're going through. The other piece, as it relates to Committee of the Whole, I think that it would be, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to do it now, because the way the bylaws read, the chair makes that selection, as other chairs have. Ellen had it one way, you know, Winfrey, Avery had it one way, and others, and so on and so forth. That's determined at the beginning of the chair's term. What I would also add to that is that also, and that's a discussion for another day, is that, you know, we have a lot of activity, meetings and such conversations as individual board members with different entities on different causes. But, the thought is, and I think our bylaws support that, is that the committees as, are even more active in the work throughout the weeks and throughout the months and throughout the years, whereby the, you excuse me, because I'm not feeling the best, so I'm a little cloudy a little bit, but whereas the individual committees, smaller, is, is designed, to my understanding and opinion, so that there can be greater activity and more collaboration amongst a smaller subset of people, you know, at a particular given time. One great example of that is what Economic Development is doing, for instance, what a lot of their work. You don't have nine people a part of it, you know, you have five, three may work, or whatever the case may be. And so, that's one of the reasons why I support the, the individual subcommittees. And I think it's worked well in this setting, because with this group, we've all attended all committees, all have been able to ask questions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I won't go on and on, but I think if there's greater activity, greater participation, greater engagement, which I think will serve the county well, of the individual standing committees, then that kind of lends towards having the subcommittees. Whereas, if there's not great activity, then having everybody in one setting, it doesn't make as, as much a difference. I, I, hopefully that makes sense. So, I guess it depends on what the activity is, and that's one reason why I went to, elected to go to individual subcommittees with the hopes and anticipation that there is greater activity and collaboration amongst the individual subcommittees. So, I'm actually interested to hear from the other chairs, even if you're not voting, a voting member of this committee, what your preference is with this particular item that's before us, because based on the perspective of all of the chairs or all of you, that's where my vote is gonna fall, because I really want to do what's the will of the body.
Are you trying to get the floor here? Commissioner Flue?
Just, just one quick thing. I, I think is, as far as Robert's rules go, maybe to address what Commissioner Kuzno was, was talking about, you can separate individual items, or you can separate the whole committee. You can pull your whole committee right out of theirs. I mean, I don't have a problem with the way it's written, because if there's, there's items that need a lot of discussion, or if there's only two or three, you can pull that whole committee out and do those items individually, or individual agenda items.
That's true.
Commissioner Brown.
I'll weigh in. I, I think that, I, I think we're all trying to get to the same thing, and that's efficiency. And so, I, I've seen consent agendas used effectively in many, many settings. So, I, I think we are getting into a habit, and really, it just, it's all about developing a habit of adopting a consent agenda as a chairperson. You know, I, I, I did it, I think, you know, maybe once or twice, because I don't have that many items on my agenda, so I can, it's easy for me to read two things, but when we do have long reports like the one we had tonight, you know, that triggers me to, to do things in bulk. And so, I, I agree with Commissioner Shoemaker when he made the recommendation of having those kinds of long reports on the nights when we have the full committee. I just think that makes sense. I also think it makes sense, and for me, as a chairperson of Community and Economic Development, I really, and, because I was chair last year, I was chair this year, I really didn't see any difference in engagement. I mean, I'm gonna engage all y'all anyway, and so, you don't have a choice. You, you gotta engage with Community and Economic Development. So, that said, I prefer the Committee of the Whole, like Commissioner Winfrey suggested. And finally, I, I'm kind of thinking that because we, Robert's Rules order is already there, we have the ability to be flexible and pull things out. We don't really need to change the bylaws, because it's already stated in Robert's Rule of Orders. That's all.
If there's not a problem, we don't need to fix it. I think that we have the discretion now. We've been exercising it more lately than before. And so, any chair, you know, given the rhythm of the meeting and where we're at in any moment, can decide, you know, I'm gonna offer this as a consent, and then anyone on here can pull items off under the current structure. So, I, I'm gonna, this is what's on the floor, and I'll be voting no tonight to move it forward. Do we have additional discussion on the motion, which is to adopt this? Commissioner Lloyd.
So, based on the perspective that I heard from the, the chairs, which I appreciate the discussion, that's what I desire to take place, my vote will be no on it as well.
Additional discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay. I believe the motion is defeated. Three to two. All right. Thank you all. So, then, Commissioner Shoemaker, you want to offer a motion from the floor regarding presentations or communications, as we call them, on the agenda?
I would like to put a motion on the floor that all communications and presentations be brought, brought to us only on nights of full board meetings.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
I do. So... What, what happens if there are? I guess the concern would be, what, what does the, what does the bylaw say now about what gets added to the full board meeting agenda? Do you have a copy of it in front of you? No, 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 the language in the bylaws to talk about how items get added beyond the committees to the full board agenda. I believe there's a piece that speaks...
Really, you're asking how do communications and particularly presentations that are under that umbrella get placed on an agenda?
Just indulge me just for a second. Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, essentially, 50,000-foot view, everything comes to the board through a committee, through a standing committee normally and principally assigned to consideration matters, including the substance of the motion or resolution, or in the absence of a committee chair, blah, 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 blah. Let me see here. So, has been referred to the board. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to go through this. So, the next way that something can come to the full board is a motion or resolution has been moved by the chairperson of a board standing committee normally or principally assigned to consideration matters, including the substance of the motion or resolution, or in the absence of a committee chairperson, such motion or resolution has been moved by the vice chairperson of that committee, and prior to voting upon the motion or resolution, the board has been advised by notation with emphasis in the agenda or otherwise at the meeting, that the matter has not been referred to the board by committee. So, it didn't go through a committee, has to be notated in the agenda that it was waved through committee on your agenda.
May I, may I just interrupt? So, let's, I think it might be better if we take a case in point, which is the presentation tonight.
Sure.
Hour-long presentation, coming out of the task force, part of their work. I think it just sort of landed on this agenda through conversation, informal conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Freeman, informal conversation with Marlene and you, and maybe me to a degree, and it got placed on the agenda because we know that we need to hear it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair?
Yep.
So, it, it's, it's somewhat informal, and I, I know that as a chair of a committee, I've gotten into the room where I, I only realize the presentation is when I receive the agenda electronically. So, we might want to have, I mean, I realize the motion is to, to put it onto the full board of commission evening, but it might be better to have presentations be approved by the chair of the committee before they come forward, or at least, or maybe set a time limit on presentations. But, I'll, I'll stop, because I'm chairing this meeting. Commissioner Lloyd.
So, so, I was looking for, I don't have enough time to go through right now, so two pieces. So, there's a, there's, the bylaws speak to how items can come to a committee or get waved through a committee. And so, really, the action takes place in the committee, I mean, the work takes place in the committee, if you will. Once it's moved to the board, the full board meeting, right, out of those committees, it's, it's, mostly that work is completed. There may be a question or something that somebody has, but the work has been done. And the chairs of those committees, I'm paraphrasing, for the sake of discussion, basically decide what comes to that committee, like we do it now, even if it's by courtesy. Hey, I want to bring whatever, finance, Commissioner Kuzno, are you good? You know, whatever case might be, so we get that courtesy. But then, when you come to, and I'm saying this for any person who's chair of the board, that's how I look at things, regardless of whoever it is. I'm just thinking, when you get to the full board meeting, I'm trying to figure out, then who decides beyond what came through committee, what can go on the full board agenda? Is that the chairperson of the board, take me out of it altogether? Is it the chairperson of the board, then, that says, okay, for the full board meeting, I'm okay with this presentation happening, this presentation happening, as happens with the committees now? Because if somebody wants to do a presentation in your committee, they get with you as the chair of that committee, and you decide it. All in all, when it comes to the full board agenda, my concern is nine people, or five chairs, or six chairs with appointments, all dictating and determining that something's coming to the full board agenda. I think that that should be the chair, whoever it is. I'd vote, go to January, I'll vote, you know, whoever. And I think the committees, that should be the committee, the chairs of those committees deciding that. You get what I'm saying? So, that's my only concern. I don't have a problem with items coming, but I also believe, I also don't want to vote to take away, you know, Dr. Brown or whoever's ability to have somebody specific, because they're working on the project, come to their committee and present. because they're working on the project, come to their committee and present. So, I just, you know, I want us to think about that, be careful with that, but I also don't want to have a one person, as one voting member, I don't want to have a situation where nine people are then dictating outside of committee settings, what comes to the full board agenda, just like we don't have that with the committees, that's all. Just a caution, something for us to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Shoemaker?
I'm, Commissioner Winfrey, go first, because, sorry.
I was just going to say that, whether it's at committee or at the full board, there should be a time restriction on the presentation.
You sound like what I told Josh a little bit ago.
Yeah.
We were, we, if, if I may, he and I have had this discussion tonight, we had it as well, and, and I, it's written on this paper, fifteen to twenty minutes.
Exactly.
So that we can, so that's something we'll do, we don't need a bylaw change, but we'll... Amen.
Traditionally, that's the way we've done it, is fifteen to twenty minutes, and the people are told that before the, I spoke out of turn, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Kuzno, is it okay if he?
Traditionally, in the past, you know, whoever was behind, you know, pulling, you know, bringing somebody up, they told them fifteen minutes, so they knew that and prepared themselves.
So, what's...
Commissioner Shoemaker?
I'm going to let everybody go on, you know, I like the last word anyway, so go ahead.
So, so, to, to both points, we'll be more diligent, you know, in that going forward. Thanks.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Thank you. I hate to, you know, I, I want to express to the people presenting to us to be diligent about watching their time, but I also don't want them to skip over things that are vital. We've spent all this money, or, maybe not in this case, but in some cases, we've spent all this money and this time and these resources, and to have them rush through it would be, in my opinion, going a waste. So, I'm, I'm not as concerned with that time, concerned with making sure it's on the right night, so we do have time to take care of everything the right way. I, now, I, we should tell them, yes, please be mindful of the time you are going to present and hit the bullet points, but fifteen minutes for something like we just saw tonight, I don't know how she'd get us all that vital information in fifteen minutes, I don't know how it's going to happen. So, I'm a little concerned with that. So, I would, I would urge you to reconsider that. My, my, my other point is, is maybe if you want to still give the chair of each board the say, and that board a say, is you put it as a resolution that this will be, be being presented the next week. So, like this week, you'd say, we're going to approve it for next week's meeting, that that subcommittee will approve that this presentation is coming, so then the board, the chair of that board, like Government Operations, still has that say, that this proposal or presentation or report is coming, and then the full board can look at it. Some of these, we have to accept the report also, as a full board. We've done that before, we've accepted the report. And, because we have spent taxpayer dollar on it, so I think it's very important, guess what, that we feel like we've got our dollars, and we vote on some of these larger reports we spend money on, so it's up to the rest of the board. I'm just trying to be more efficient with our time. I'm also trying to be courteous to the residents, because I really believe if you're logging on to Genesee County's, you know, YouTube channel, guess what, you're watching the full board, subcommittees is less of something you're going to think of. And these things, we've spent a lot of time and energy, and sometimes money on, that they should be front and center. So, I don't know what we need to do, if you need, need to change my resolution, but I would like to see all these still at our full board meeting, whichever way it has to happen. So, if I need to change my resolution to make it work, please let me know, and I'll be glad to do that.
So, Commissioner Fluehling?
Just one thing real quick, and to, I'll just say this, if anybody ever had a presentation for Public Works that was an hour long, nobody here would get much out of it, because it'd be nine, ten o'clock at night, so to, to put it in front of the full board where it may be forty-five minute to an hour meeting, if you had a presentation to it, I'm all for it.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Lloyd?
I also don't want to, even if we, and I don't have a problem with the committees voting in the Senate, but I also don't want to lose, and this is for whoever's chair, so I'm, that's a blanket statement, I don't want to lose the ability for the chair to add stuff to that full board meeting agenda, because we've had multiple chairs who've done it. You come in there, something that they, you get what I'm saying?
No, I understand.
Because if we add something that says, hey, it's committee, then what's the mechanism, unless that doesn't change? You understand what I'm saying? So, I just, I'm, I'm sensitive, I don't want to, I, as one who's currently chair, I don't want to do anything to take any ability to do whatever I had ability to do from any future chair. That's my sensitivity.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
I don't, I don't think you're doing that, because the committee's just adding it, and at that point, the chair, when the agenda gets approved, is allowed to put things on their, you know, or to their discretion, at their discretion, and we've had former chairs do that in many years, and I've been surprised by things that have been added later on. So, I, I don't think you're going to lose that with this, and if we're concerned with it, we can pass a resolution, Ben can review it, and make sure we're, we're, we're okay with that, it's not going to take your ability, not you, but the chair of the Genesee County Board's ability away to approve future items on the agenda, so.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I think I have a solution to close this out, like we did with the other. I think the solution is committees who want the reports to come to the full board, do as you did, just vote to send it to the full board, right? And, and I think that addresses it, right? So, if you want it to come to the full board, you just vote to send it to the full board, and it shows up on the full board agenda. Outside of that, it continues to work the way it's, it works, so. And I don't think we need to do a bylaw to do it, we just do it, and it's kind of in the same spirit that we talked about, about, you know, consent agendas and stuff. We, and that's, that's what makes this such a great conversation, in my opinion, is that we're discussing it, right? And we're at the conclusion, we had authority to do what, everything we discussed already, so if we want to do it, we'll just do it. I think that's the solution.
There is a motion on the floor, as I understand it, to require that all communications, and including presentations, be shifted entirely to full session meetings. Is that the motion? It's got, moved and supported. Is there additional discussion?
Additional discussion? My vote is going to be no for the reason I just mentioned.
My, my...
Commissioner Shoemaker?
My, my concern is that if we don't put something in place like this, things happen, staff get busy, things get put on there, because I've asked for this to be changed before, this is not the first time I've sat in front of this body and asked for this to happen. So, forgive me if I'm a little leery of not having it passed, because I think it's very important to have, as that's our primary objective, to, to have them, so staff has direction and understanding, there's no miscommunication between the chair of any committee and other members of this board that could get our staff in hot water, because one chair said this, the rest of the board said that. I think being as clear as possible with our staff beforehand is very vital, and I think this just makes it very clear, guess what, this is what we're going to do, we really believe in this much, we're putting it in writing, it's not just a recommendation, and then, when Josh helps you put the agenda together, whoever's there, he goes, yep, this is what it is, there's no, there's no me later on, but hey, you know, if I'm chair of, let's say, in the future, Public Works or anything else like that, I go, hey, I wanted that this night, no, this is what the policy says, this is what the bylaws say. So, that's just, that's where I am, I, I, like I said, I, I moved it, I believe in it, so, and I'll be quiet now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Fluehling?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just reiterate what I said earlier, and it's not even just so much for, for the nine of us here, right? If, if, if a presentation is on Public Works or even Human Services, the general public, the odds that they're going to sit through a three or four hour YouTube video to see that presentation at Intersem is pretty low. So, I think we're doing them a disservice too, by putting it on this night, whereas they could watch the full board meeting nights and have that presentation within half hour to an hour.
Mr. Chairman, can you restate the motion?
All right. I will restate it, and correct me if I have it wrong, all communications, which includes any presentations at that microphone, to us, will now be done during full Board of Commissioners meetings, and we will not have any during committee meetings. I mean, that's essentially the essence of it, right? Now, where in the bylaws that belongs, and whether it affects any existing language, I'm not certain, but may I just say, I think I'm going to vote no right now, I'm not opposed to it philosophically, but there, I, I just wonder about unintended consequences potentially, and I think maybe this is a larger conversation. You know, one of the things that could happen is we could have four and five and six presentations in one evening, and make our board meetings longer. So, you know, I would rather stay, I guess, informal for the moment, where, you know, I should have done a better job tonight, speaking with the guest in advance, to find out how long the presentation was, so I could say, you really need to have this done in fifteen minutes, twenty at the most, because then there's going to be Q and A. I would prefer that flexibility for the committee chairs, as opposed to requiring them all to be piled on, assuming there's more than one, the full commission agenda. Commissioner Shoemaker?
Looked the wrong way. Thank you, Commissioner Wayill. We've had that happen, though, during subcommittee, we've had them all piled on, on subcommittee. We had a couple weeks ago, three presentations right around subcommittee, so it's not going to stop it, whether you go full committee or subcommittee, you still have them all the same night, so it, the, the whole thing is, is, one, we should be as chair, or committee chairs, going, okay, speaking with Mr. Freeman, and saying, hey, what do we have coming up with other boards? And then, like I said, we vote on them, my opinion would be, we vote on, like Government Office right now, that presentation, we would have voted, say, yep, we're going to move it to the full board, obviously, next week, that's what we want it. There shouldn't be the issue that this is when they can come in, yep, this is what we're going to do. Because, like I said, I don't think there's going to be any difference, because we've stacked them up during subcommittee meetings, like just a couple weeks ago, we had three. So, I don't think it's going to change whether we do that. We need to be more diligent with that, as, as we coordinate with Mr. Freeman in his office, moving forward. But I, like I said, I'm, I'm for it, I don't think it, it changes anything, other than you're going to have it, and I don't know if it always has to, you could put something in there for special circumstances. If the board, if the chairman, the chair of the subcommittee wants to have it on the subcommittee night, so be it, I'm, I could live, I can live with that, but like I said, I, I just want something ready, because I don't, we've talked about this before, and it just hasn't happened, and I've been down here long, and I've been blessed enough to be down here seven years almost, and it just hasn't happened.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I know, I know we're bringing this to a conclusion, two pieces, and, and I'm not trying to go into weeds, or get into any discussions, personnel, none of that kind of stuff, I just want to make this point, that if a chair, and I'm not suggesting it's happening or not happening, I'm not even trying to get into that right now, me, trying to get into that right now. What I'm saying is, if there's a chair requesting for something to happen, and it doesn't happen, same thing for any commissioner, that's a different conversation we need to have, and that's, that's like the, the, the piece about, that's going to show up in the sermon, by the way, the, the, the...
Upstream?
Yes. Okay.
You might invite her to deliver that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I was thinking about the, the, the man on the mat, taking them up on the roof, and that kind of stuff, but here's my point. If there's a, an issue to be resolved, we'll withdraw the issue. I don't want us to create a policy that doesn't address the root, if there's a root to be addressed. That's all I'm saying about that. Another reason why I think that we should still have the presentations in the committees, if the chairs want to do it, this is why, because there may be a, a, a presentation that feeds a resolution on the agenda, that pairs with the discussion on that, as the committee decides if they want to send it to the full board. And so, I think, you know, the chairs have the right to say, these five presentations or two, or whatever that I want to do, we're going to vote tonight to send it to the full board. The chair doesn't get to dictate that it shows up, it doesn't, we voted on it, we sent it to the full board, that presentation happens. And if you don't, you don't vote to send it to the full board. So, as a chair, you control, it really is the individual chairpersons that controls if it shows up. Now, if you vote for it to come, and it doesn't come, then that's a discussion that we need to have with the staff, and an issue to be addressed with the staff. And again, I'm not getting into whether it happens or it doesn't, but if it doesn't show up, then that's another issue that we address, that's something else for us to address. So, I, I'll digress totally.
Yeah.
Mr. Winfrey?
I agree wholeheartedly with, with, with that, and a classic example happened with the senior services allocations, where the director of the Flushing Senior Center presented before we took action on that distribution, which changed everything. So, you know, I agree with that statement, that if it's, you know, some presentations tie directly into the agenda items that we're discussing. So, I, I don't think that we should move the, those presentations solely, you know, to the full board.
We have additional discussion. Commissioner Shoemaker?
That's why I was making, if you, if you're that concerned, number one, we were just talking about, you were just talking, Charles, about having full committee, because you want everybody to have a say, but if you just do it in the subcommittee, you take the proposal, not everyone, they can make a comment, but they can't vote if they don't like the proposal to move it forward, so I'm kind of a little confused with the way that, that's going to work, but I'm willing, like I said, I'm willing to say, it's up to the, to the chair if they want to have it there, but there's got to be something to give everybody direction on, on a normal day to go, guess what, most of these, unless the chair says otherwise, are going to go full committee, so, because there's planning in advance, we, we make, we make arrangements with the presenters to make sure they're coming, you know? And two, though, I, I'm not sure that it shouldn't, each proposal should be approved by the, the, the subcommittee board, period, because let's say we send out for a, let's say, I'm chair of Public Works, and I decide, I say, Josh, I want to, I want to study on X, Y, Z, and that we vote as a board, that we're going to study the effects of EVs on whatever. And let's say, Fluehling's sitting on my board, and a couple other members, and we picked a group, and they don't like anything on there, they think it's totally inaccurate or bunk. They should have the right to say, guess what, we're not going to present that to the people. You know, so, like I said, I'll draw my motion, you can keep going, I, I hope it changes. I, I just, I don't know why there's such pushback to this. Between now and next week, we could develop language that will let you keep your, what you want as a chair, just trying to expedite things, and trying to make sure people get a full presentation, they spent their hard time, and yeah, this was long, but they spent a lot of work on this, and a lot of time, and I just, they deserve that respect, but the, the residents deserve us to spend the time on actually this stuff, when we're in subcommittee, instead of an hour proposal tonight, so. Like I said, I'll, I'll draw it, because evidently, it doesn't seem like there's, there's support for it, I just don't know why there wouldn't be support for it, you know? If, if you want to bring something up that's prudent to it, we can put language in there, Ben, put language in there, but that's fine.
Sounds like the motion has been withdrawn. I know, Commissioner Fluehling, you wanted the floor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, just, I was just going to offer, through you, to Commissioner Shoemaker, an amendment, would, would, with the language as you presented, all presentations, communications to the full board, would you be open to amendment, unless a committee chair wants that presentation in committee? That kind of, that kind of deals with both sides, right?
That's what I was trying to say, but it seemed like we didn't have support for that, so that's why I said, I'll just withdraw it, because it doesn't seem that there's support for that. But, like I said, if you are committee chair, yes, you have some rights, but I also think that, that there's a committee for a reason, you know, because you can have all the ideas you want as committee chair, you can bring it in front of us, but guess what, if the rest of the committee votes it down, it doesn't go to the full board.
I think that would provide some guardrails to say that all presentations are pushed to the full board, but you've got that exception if the committee chair wants them in committee.
So, are you offering that as an amendment? Commissioner Fluehling?
Yes, sir.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
There's support. So, would, if, let me try to restate the motion as amended. All communications, all presentations will typically be placed on the full Board of Commissioners agenda, meeting agendas, unless a chair of a standing committee desires to have that communication or that presentation during their committee meeting. Is that a fair? That's fair? All right. We've heard it. Is there a discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Commissioner Lloyd?
I'll, I'll, I'll support it, because it, it, it addresses both sides of it. It doesn't, just as I was talking about, as chair, don't want it to, same thing with the committee chairs, I don't want to take any authority from committee chairs, that committee chairs already have, and this addresses the piece, it kind of addresses, hey, we will endeavor to have them all here, but again, the chairs, the committee chairs still decide if you want to have it in your committee, so I, I'll support that.
Additional discussion on the amendment to the main motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The amendment passes, now we're on the main motion as amended, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, we are now on to Resolution 2025-2586, Approval of the Process and Timeline for Direct Report Evaluations.
Move it.
It's been moved, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? There is, I'll just say, there is a copy, a hard copy, of the proposed process and the timeline in front of you.
No, I just gave it to you.
Oh, just to me?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you had given it to everyone. All right, but it's in the packet. So the committee members and the rest of the board have this in their electronic packets. I'll read it, if, it's, it's fairly quick. This is the process. Consistent with the Board of Commissioners' policy of annually evaluating each of its direct reports, adopted on 10/15/25, which was last Wednesday, the Governmental Operations Committee proposes that each commissioner individually complete and return to the chair and vice chair of the Governmental Operations Committee evaluation instruments for the positions of Genesee County Director of Administration and Genesee County Corporation Council. Each of these evaluation instruments, one specific to each position, will be proposed separately for adoption by the full board of commissioners. Parenthetically, those are the next items on our agenda tonight. Each commissioner will have thirty days, thirty calendar days, to complete his or her evaluation instruments, see proposed timeline. Upon the completion and return of each completed evaluation instrument to the chair and vice chair of the Governmental Operations Committee, the evaluation results for each position will be aggregated and shared with each of the nine commissioners. Evaluation submitted after the thirty-day deadline will not be included in the aggregate documents. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act and any of the relevant statutes or county policies, the full board of commissioners will meet in December 2025, exact date TBD, to review and discuss the aggregate results of each evaluation. Proposed timeline starts with this evening, Governmental Operations Committee to review and vote on evaluation process, timeline, and the evaluation instruments for each position. Next Wednesday, the full board of commissioners to review and vote on evaluation process, timeline, and the evaluation instruments. The day after next Wednesday, assuming there's a majority that adopts the resolution, it will be the adopted process timeline and instruments will be sent by the Governmental Operations Committee Chair to the Board of Commissioners, all nine of us, with a thirty-day deadline for completion and return to the chair and vice chair, so myself and Commissioner Shoemaker. 10:30 from October 30th through the, through November 30th, that's the thirty-day window. Individual commissioners will complete their evaluations and submit them to the chair and vice chair of the Governmental Operations Committee. December 3rd, which is the first committee meeting after the thirty days, the chair and vice chair of the Governmental Operations Committee will compile all completed evaluations for each position, Director of Administration, Corp. Counsel, into two aggregated documents, one for each position, and share these with all nine commissioners. Also on 12/3/25, the Board of Commissioners will schedule time during a regular meeting, or schedule a special meeting, or meetings, to review evaluation results for both positions, consistent with the Open Meetings Act and any other relevant statutes or county policies. Date TBD, in, in December, the Board of Commissioners will meet to review and discuss evaluation results for both positions, consistent with the Open Meetings Act, excuse me, or any other relevant statutes or county policies. So that is what the motion is on the floor right now. Any discussion? All those in favor, please, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Say thank you, Dale, for all the hard work on this.
You're welcome.
Ditto.
Thank you. I want to thank the commissioners who asked, have been asking about this process for a number of months, who've offered feedback on both the process and the instruments. To me, this is step one in what will be a lengthy, evolving process, where, you know, this doesn't, this doesn't commit us to having the same evaluation instruments every time. You'll get to these, we'll get to these in a minute, but these are based on current job descriptions, word for word, and as those job descriptions are changed, as we set expectations going forward for our direct reports and goals, we can amend the instrument to reflect our expectations for our direct reports. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Commissioner Lloyd?
No, I was going to say, echo everything that's been said, and I think this puts us on a course to be more responsible, even more responsible, as it relates to, you know, our department heads, our direct reports. You know, our team should have an organized process for us to give them feedback, right? I, I think it's, we, you know, think it's, is responsible, and our, our team, you know, members of our team deserve that, and so I think this is good. You know, this process is going to take some time to get through, you know, to get through all evaluations and so on and so forth, and, and then I'll stop there, thank you.
All right, do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I'll move, well, I'll do these one at a time, because they're different, there's different job descriptions. So Resolution 2025-2587, Approval of an Evaluation Instrument for the Director of Administration.
Move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? I'll just say, you know, Dr. Brown, you gave me a copy of an example evaluation for, I believe, Saginaw, is that right? And there's great items in there, which I would absolutely be in favor of putting into these instruments going forward. Once we, I, I think it's unfair to an individual, in this case, the Director of Administration, to add things in there that this person didn't know about, and grade them on those things if they weren't part of their JD. So that's my philosophy on it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-2588, Approval of an Evaluation Instrument for Corporation Counsel.
Move it.
It's been moved, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion?
Just a quick question I meant to ask on the previous one. So the, the scoring system, two, one, or zero? Is that, is that how it goes? I was just curious, I've seen a lot of them that are one through five.
So I have what I have, and if people want to make an amendment to it, to add different numerics, change the categories, change the way it's phrased, I'm offering it, but yes, correct, it's, it's one, two, it's a two if they're, the person is doing excellent, essentially, a one if they're meeting the expectation in the job description, then there's two columns that are both zeros. The first one is not meeting the expectations, the last column is a zero for not meeting the expectations, and this particular item that we're scoring from the job description needs immediate attention, and needs to be addressed immediately in terms of the performance. So that's how I did it.
Okay.
There's different ways of doing it, you could have different numbers and fewer columns, but that, that's how I did it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to that, I just, I don't know what, what the rest of the, rest of the body, how they feel. I just, I know I've seen a lot of evaluations that are like the one through five, you know, not meeting standard to, you know, meeting standard type of deal.
We could have more columns, for sure, it's a Likert scale situation, where you could parse it out certainly differently than I did. If people want to make an amendment, they can...
Yeah, I just, I was just curious.
Thank you. Other discussion? Commissioner Lloyd?
I just think that we should state, so, we've had a resolution just now for Director of Administration, we have the resolution for Corporation Counsel, because we chose to start somewhere, right?
True.
And so ultimately, you know, we'll be coming back around this, Ben, as it relates to all department heads, but we chose to start with those that, their synergy agreement, that there's direct reports, you know, of the board, so I just thought I should say that.
Is there additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. One quick item that's not on the agenda, Mr. Freeman and Derek and others have been working carefully on our priorities, which is this document here. We had some discussion last week about the need to review these, and have some, have some conversation under a motion, and then hopefully adopt them after discussion, and maybe some amending. I didn't feel like we should have them on tonight's agenda, given the importance of these and the length of the various agendas tonight, so I'm asking that everyone review this over the next month or so. I don't even plan on putting it on the next Government Ops Committee agenda. I think there's enough meat in here for us to look at individually, talk with each other if we wish to, and then it'll be on the December Government Ops for a motion to place it on the floor, a second presumably, and then we can have a discussion about it. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I, I, before you close out your meeting, I think this falls under Government Ops, but last week I had a chance to attend the opening of the Legal Resource Center, and it was absolutely a fabulous facility, they made a major transformation, and Barb Meneer did a wonderful job of, you know, just laying out the, the history of it. And she gave me one statistic that I want to share with you all, and that is, since September, September 22nd of this year, they've had 502 patrons come to the Legal Resource Center. 502 patrons, and they received assistance from a navigator inside the Legal Resource Center. So I just want to say that, and she gave lots of other statistics, too, but I think it was a great investment for the citizens of Genesee County, so.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I want to thank the Legal Resource Center, I don't see anybody, well, nobody's here, but yeah, thank you.
God bless you all.
Did see photos online of the...
Yes, and they did a great video, too, that we can share with you of the, the new space.
Thank you for mentioning that. If there's no other business, we are adjourned at 8:29 PM.
All right, we're going to call the Human Services Committee to order, roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Avery? Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzina?
Here.
And Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
All right, we're entertaining a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Are any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are closed. No communications, no old business, new business, Resolution 2025-2405, Approval of a Request to Record a Notice of Award Approving a Non-Federal Share Waiver for the 2024-2025 Head Start Program Year from the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families.
Move it. Support.
Properly moved and supported, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Resolution 2025-2439, Approval of Operation Green Light for Veterans in Genesee County. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move it. Support.
Properly moved and supported, at this time, I'd like for Colonel Britton to come forward to present this resolution to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Derek Britton, Director of Veteran Services, to the honorable chairperson and members of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, Genesee County, Michigan, ladies and gentlemen, whereas the residents of Genesee County have great respect and admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Genesee County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas Genesee, whereas veterans continue to serve our community, and in organizations such as the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states, to help fellow former service members access more than 52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately, approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service, service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas Genesee County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, be resolved with the designation as a green light for Veterans County, Genesee County hereby declares November 4th through 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of those transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in operation of Operation Green Light, Genesee County will host an Operation Green Light kickoff celebration on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, at 1:00 PM at the Genesee County Administration Building, and illuminate county buildings with green lights. Be it further resolved that Genesee County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in windows and in places of business or residence from November 4th through 11th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Any discussion on the mo, on the motion? Hear none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. There's no other business before this committee, we stand adjourned.
Call the Public Work Committee to order at 8:34, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flueeling?
Present.
Commissioner Avery? Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, Resolution 2025-2557, Approval of meeting minutes from October 8th, 2025.
Tomorrow.
Moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment to the committee? Any public comment to the committee? Public comment is closed. No communications, no old business, new business. I would like to offer Resolutions 2 through 16, and 18 and 19 as consent.
Support.
With any separations? Moved and supported, any discussion?
I, I have one question to Patrick, is he still here?
Yep.
So I'm looking at some of these, they may have fall, fallen in the, the area of the resolution you mentioned, some are for plants, shrubs, decorations, concrete, and we're closing out the season, coming to the end of the season, right?
The, the, this is for 2026, heading in, so...
So that's my question, if you're trying, if you're working to get ahead for next year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Resolution 2025, motion carries. Resolution 2025-2411, Approval of an Agreement between Genesee County and Cisco Duo in an amount not to exceed $39,700 to provide multi-factor authentication.
Move it. Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-2468, Approval of a Grant Award from the Charles Stewart Matt Foundation in the amount of $301,52 to provide for the continued operation of the Flint River Watershed Coalition through December 31st, 2026.
Move it.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, do we, does Genesee County provide any resources to support the coalition?
We provide staff, but it's paid for through the grants associated with it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Patrick? One question.
Sorry.
What, what is the cost of the staff provided? Do you, do you know that?
Not at the moment, so we will be bringing probably in the next cycle, a full-time position to oversee it, and we're working with the Watershed Coalition to transfer their part-time employees over.
To you?
Yes.
Okay. If you could, when you bring that, could you give me, give us the overall cost of, of the employees that work on this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
How, how long ago did we talk about this, about, you know, this convergence, if you will? Was it like a year ago or something?
Yeah, it was, it was probably March, April-ish.
Of last year? Or this year?
Of this year.
How, how long ago did we talk about this, about, you know, this convergence, if you will? Was it like a year ago or something?
Yeah, it was, it was probably March, April-ish, um.
Of last year? Or this year?
Uh, of this year.
This year?
Of this year.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Uh, we were just waiting for some of the, uh, pieces to fall in, uh, in place with funding and that, which, you know, is this main point right here.
So has it still been operating separately, or?
Yeah, so the Watershed Coalition, um, which is transitioning to the friends of the watershed, um, they've been paying, uh, for the employees and that through, uh, the grants and that, that they have secured to, uh, operate, so.
Thank you.
And, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Um, other business, I do have a question, I, I was gonna ask Ray, but I didn't see him, so I'll ask Mr. Freeman. Um, who monitors the AVL data of county-owned vehicles?
AVL data? Data, you're talking about the OnStar that we have, or the AVLs through the police or sheriff's office?
How many county vehicles, county-owned vehicles have AVLs, vehicle locators?
So, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but every vehicle that has OnStar on it has, it's activated.
Okay, does anybody monitor that, as far as?
It's all monitored through risk management to create that separation, so like, the detective's vehicles, for example, it's one person that we're able to, um, um, follow.
Okay, so, the reason I ask this, I, there was a report received that there was a, a county-owned vehicle spotted on a Saturday evening in the Out County.
Mm-hmm.
The likelihood that that's county business is probably pretty low, could be, I don't know, but, m, my question would be, is there, is there anyone that, and you're saying risk management, monitors that to ensure compliance with the, um, county vehicle policy?
So, to, to the extent that I think what you're asking for, no, there's probably not anybody that's going on and making sure every day that that vehicle was only you for that direct piece, so no, there isn't anybody that monitors that specific piece.
Okay, so the only way we would know that it would be a violation of the policy would be through complaints?
Yeah.
Okay. Can, can you give me any data that you have on how many, I've got the, I've got a list, I believe, of county-owned vehicles, but.
Yeah, I can get you the list of those vehicles that are on, because, you, you know, we probably have well over two hundred vehicles.
Sure.
But some of those are used vehicles, like in the parks, that, you know, that don't, are of an age that they don't have a track on, on them, right? Um, but I can get that information for you.
Okay.
What's your feeling? Um, thank you for bringing that up. The, the whole reason that policy, if we, and I don't, I know most of you weren't here, I don't know if Mr. Kuzina was here when we, when we, we passed this and I pushed for this, was to make sure that we are mitigating the risk, but if we have no way of actually, I don't want to put this, looking into the fact that, guess what, someone has one of our vehicles in the Out County or is doing something they shouldn't be doing on a weekend or other, elsewise with a county vehicle, th, the trackers are pretty much useless other than, you know, so we've got to, we've got to follow through with the directive of what this, the intent was of this policy. Was it not just, it wasn't just for us to say, hey, yeah, it's on the vehicle, and then risk management to actually look into the fact that somebody's speeding or something like that, wants to, I'll get some notifications. It was to stop the abuse we had of county vehicles. So I, I think we need to maybe look at that policy again, and Public Works is the perfect place to do it, of how we're gonna actually track it, what we are legally allowed to do. Now, they are our vehicles, and I do know something about, uh, tracking vehicles that are your own, you have, you have quite a broad swath, you can do that, because it is county property, and we are the board that's in charge of overseeing that, but I think we need to put something in place to make sure we are tracking that, to limit the abuse of it. On top of it, we have a liability risk, and if they are out on a Saturday, let's say they are doing something that's inappropriate, because we have had that problem before where somebody was out after hours, wrecked the car, and thank heavens they didn't hit anybody else or kill anybody else, because we would be paying the bill right now, we're still being in court over it. So, I, I guess that, I, I'm frustrated, because one, we didn't put these on quick enough, two, we should be monitoring, so I, if you would take that up in your committee, I would appreciate it.
Well, that's where my mind goes, is liability. You want to try to prevent something before it happens, because if an incident does occur, then there's a lot of liability involved in that.
Oh, Crystal? Me, through the chair. Um, we do have some alerts set, we have, um, speed, so we have alerted the board office a couple times when someone was going a, a very large speed, um, and that issue was addressed with that department who, um, addressed it with the staff. We also have alerts just to help with, um, tire pressure. Um, there was people bringing stuff into motor pool to be fixed that had issues that were just left unattended for a period of time, and you know, it helps us to not replace tires as quickly if things aren't popping, um, so there's alerts set for oil, tires. I do know that the risk manager gets on there sometimes and checks locations, because there was one car, um, out of the county for several days, and then she asked about it, like, who's that assigned to? I could look in the system and see that that person was at a conference. Um, I'm not sure though on, um, you know, we do have a, a few take-home vehicles that those people are required to report personal mileage, so it may be one of those, I can check into it if you want to touch base offline. Um, but I can also look and see if there's other geographical areas that we could also establish for her to, to monitor, just to make sure it makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I didn't want to get super deep into weeds on it tonight, but obviously, if there's a policy in place, we've talked about compliance before, we want to make sure that everybody's complying with that policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I believe that there should be monitoring on these vehicles. Thank you, Crystal, for what you shared, um, I was aware of some of that, some of it I was not, um, but, um, I think that be, because of the, the amount of potential risk, I believe that we should have somebody monitoring those vehicles and where they're going, and not just, hey, somebody put in a complaint, so now we're checking into it, or, you know, speeding and that kind of thing, that's very important, right? Um, but, you know, understanding that those vehicles are in the county, that they're where they're supposed to be, and so on and so forth, so, having it on there, we had a policy, but we don't have a mechanism in place to, to, um, you know, you can only inspect what you inspect, and we're not inspecting it, because we don't have anything in place. So I love to see something come to the board, um, that, you know, at least for us to consider,